Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Chair. We're getting started if you'll take your whatever. Thanks for coming this morning. I think most of you know the process here, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One of them is if there's conversations in the back of the room, it interferes with the audio and the taping of the hearings. So if you need to discuss things, just go outside so we can get everybody on tape and hear the applicants. We will commence in a moment. I wanted to mention, though, two things. We haven't been here in a while. We're being recorded for cable TV. And also, we've added a lot more cases to the day to try and catch up. To catch up on the -- there's been so many, I guess, applications for variances that we're trying to accommodate and expedite the public process so people can get their stuff built or permitted. And we really need to manage testimony to what is, you know, relevant. So if you want to help us by being concise, and I'll try and do the part about eliminating repetition and all, but just to let you know, we've added about 50 percent more cases to our workload, so the day's going to be a lot longer. So we're going to try and be more efficient to try and manage that, okay? Mr. Rajaro is going to call for deferrals and withdrawals in a couple of moments, so if you cannot proceed today, we'll ask you to step up and give us a sense of why and what you're looking for, okay?
First cases are going to be here for Board Final Arbiter. Calling BZC number 33-383-166-GOLD, Street Ward 6. This particular case was before this Board on May 20th, 2014. This was a request to combine lots, erect a building for six residential units, and parking. This was approved subject to the following provisos: one, BRA Design Review; two, that it be limited to four units; and three, that it be a three-story building. Your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stepanoff, 93 East Street. Thank you for hearing me. Since I've written the application, we've decided to stick to the plan, and actually, we would like to withdraw the request. I have to know you.
So this is a withdrawal, so motion for denial without prejudice?
I don't need to speak to the Board's final arbiter. He's going to leave the decision as is. I thought I needed to change, but everything's fine. Stay with the decision as is.
Okay. So denial of the request for Board Final Arbiter. Okay, so we're on the record for that, okay? Next case is BZC number 28-615, 265 West Second Street, Ward 6. This is -- this was approved as a two-family, your name in October -- on October 9th, 2007. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Niall Sucklin, Architect for the project. My office located at 197 Eighth Street in Charlestown.
What do you -- what changes to your approvals or plans?
No, I'm simply here to inform the Board that this project was subjected to a very, very long land court case brought by an adjacent property owner. And the case was recently approved by the land court in favor of my client, and I'm simply asking the Board to reaffirm and reestablish the original variant.
You're still in a period of date? I mean, do you need an extension? Is that it?
No. Well, just an extension of the original variances that were granted by the Board back in 2007.
But in this case, doesn't the fact that because it was a court case, the court case stays our ruling and the tolling starts at the settlement of the court case?
I'm not sure of that, Mr. Pizzani.
Okay. I understand what you want. I'm going to make a motion to extend the date starting, basically, at the settlement date of the court case. When was that?
I believe it's -- I think it's in the letter. It was, I think, in May or June of this year, and then there was an appeal period now which has been exhausted.
So we'll save from today, then, just because that covers the decision and the appeal?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
For the years?
Two years. That's what the original approvals were for, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Calling BOA number 36-3497, 245, Ward 5. This is a request to change legal occupancy from four to two residential units with front decks, garage, and renovate. The only violation on this is Article 32, Section 4, D.C. Card applicability. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Quill Team, Miller, 131 Oliver Street in Boston. Passed out to the Board the approval letter by Boston Water and Sewer for the groundwater design and installation.
Okay. Mr. Laffer?
Elliot Laffer, Boston Groundwater Trust. They have their approval from Water and Sewer, and everything should be in order.
Okay. Most of approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, any of the applicants scheduled for 9:30 requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? The address, please.
Adwood Square. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Peter Finn.
She's going to be into the record, Mr. Finn.
Calling BZC number 30 -- BOA number 36-5361, 1 to 7 Adwood Square, Ward 11. This is a request to demolish the existing structure and to erect four townhouse residential units. Your name and address for the record, please.
Peter Finn, 71 South Street, which is also Adwood Square, Jamaica Plain, 02130. Developer of the property, Mr. Chairman. After an 18-month or two-year negotiation working with the neighborhood, we have an agreement with our abutters, but it requires 30 days' notice of any hearing. They've only had three weeks. We want to honor the agreement. We'd like a little more time if we've continued. Our office has been in touch with Mr. Small last week. I hope he got the message. Anytime, first two weeks of September or after October 1st. I'm on the West Coast the last two weeks of September on another project. We want to honor the agreement and give them their 30 days.
So this is really all done and sort of been vetted by the community, but you want to go back and get their final imprimatur?
In a sense. I mean, we think we have it, but as I said, the agreement requires 30 days' notice, and we want to give them.
The timing of the Neighborhood Council is the problem, right?
We've been to the Neighborhood Council.
So who is this, the abutters?
The City of Butters.
Okay. So I'm sympathetic to these developments. They're going to create four new units of housing where there was none, but it's being held up by, actually, by your goodwill. So if there's any way to grant this applicant a quick turnaround, I mean, I'd almost want to go forward with this, but I know that the neighborhood would probably not look kindly on it.
No, we want to honor the agreement.
Sadly, is there a motion?
Make a motion for deferral.
All those in favor of deferral?
Aye.
Okay.
We'll see you on December 9th at 11:30.
Is that the earliest week possible to be heard? Thank you. We appreciate the time. It's a long time, but we'll see you then.
Any other applicants requesting withdrawal or deferral? Mr. Moranci, the address?
Mr. Rajaro, this is withdrawal, 662-666 East Broadway.
662 -- it's both cases?
662-666. No, just the one case.
The second one?
The second one, exactly.
What's special today?
Calling BZC number 33-304, 662 to 666 East Broadway, Ward 6. This is a request to change legal occupancy from a one-family and barbershop to a two-family and yoga shop. Oops, the wrong one. Okay, this is a request. This is BZC number 33-304. This is a request to change legal occupancy from retail store to six residential units, restaurant, and liquor store. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 416 West Broadway in South Austin. On behalf of petitioner and my client, I withdraw the application.
Okay. So motion for denial without prejudice?
Some will.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other applicants? The address, please.
46 Port Norfolk Street.
46 Port Norfolk. Calling BZC, BOA number 36-3532, 46 Port Norfolk Street, Ward 16. This is a request to change legal occupancy from three residential units to six residential units and parking. Your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Bosse, 4 Gene Boylston Place in Brookline. On behalf of Bottom of the Ninth LLC and Matthew O'Hara, they're the applicant. We're requesting a deferral to further consult with the neighborhood to change the plans. We didn't have enough time before the last meeting to get on their.
This is Port Norfolk?
Yes.
Okay. That's -- you said you didn't have enough time to what? Get on the neighborhood agenda?
By the time I got the last notification for our hearing date today, it was after the July meeting, but their next meeting is today. Their next meeting, I believe, is September 16th, so the deferral would have to be after.
Maybe they should add cases to their agendas and go longer dates.
How many times have you met with the community?
Only one time.
Only one time. All right. Motion for deferral.
All those in favor of deferral?
Aye.
And again, we'll see you December 9th at 11:30.
You get that date, my friend?
Yes.
You did. December 9th, okay. Great. So if anyone came to hear any of these hearings that have been deferred, there's no more additional notice, so you may want to, if you're here for those two hearings that were deferred, jot the date down. Anyone else to deferrals or withdrawals, or are we all going forward?
Calling BZC number 33-654, 233 Pond Street, Ward 19. This is a request to erect an enclosed vestibule in the front with a roof over the landing. Violation is Article 55, Section 9, front yard insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Charles Brown, 233 Pond Street, Jamaica Plain, 02130.
Okay.
I have our copy of the presentation. Thank you very much.
What do you want to see on this? Is this a porch enclosure, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, sir.
This is a minor project, and the architect, Beth Weller, has done a great job on it.
Okay. Well, let me take testimony from elected officials if they want to be heard on Pond Street. If not, shut up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Hannah Smith. On behalf of District City Councilor Matt O'Malley, we'd like to go on record and support.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty, we'd like to go on record and support.
Did anyone else?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record and support.
Okay. Just to the elected officials, representatives, again, you know, we're going to try and manage our testimony efficiently, so some of these really de minimis cases, if it's okay with you, if there's no controversy, if there's no -- but please, all respect the fact that you've come and you've contributed to the process. If you want to speak, it's just fine, but we're going to try and go quickly. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you're all set, Mr. Finn.
Thank you.
Calling BZC number 33-582, 5 to 7 Moss Grove Ave., Ward 19. This is -- is the applicant here?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. David Felty, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. The applicant called me just recently. They were called out of the country for family emergency. They asked if they could defer their case. Apologize, I didn't make that earlier.
Thanks, appreciate you doing that.
Motion for deferral?
Second. Favor of deferral?
Aye.
Okay.
It's going to be December 19th at 11:30. I mean, sorry, December 9th at 11:30.
December 9th. Okay.
Calling BZC number 33-656, 543 Beach Street, Ward 18. Is the applicant here for Beach Street, Ward 18? Okay, we're going to hold that for a minute. Calling BZC number 30 -- BOA number 36-3438, 15 Evelyn Street, Ward 18. This is a request to erect a third-level addition and to renovate. Violations are Article 60, Section 9, FAR excessive, building height excessive, and usable front yard is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Grace Cantiberry, 15 Evelyn Street, Mattamian.
Grace Cantiberry, 15 Evelyn Street. Okay, welcome today. Mr. Pizzani, have you seen their plan for their condition or your expansion?
Yes, I have, Mr. Chairman. The drawings are ready. The question is, though, is showing a kitchen up on the third floor. Okay? You're in fact adding another unit on the third floor?
No, that's just for the kids. They're adults.
We always had a kitchen on that third floor. We always had a third-floor apartment on that third floor.
Right, so yeah, you have three kitchens, and you therefore have three apartments.
Yes.
What are you actually assessed for?
Three, three apartments.
You are assessed for three apartments?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a three-family?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So what are we -- so they're just expanding that top-floor apartment a little bit? You're not creating a new apartment, right?
No, all we're doing is extending the dormers from the front door.
The building code -- let's see, what are these called? The information presented is that this is a complete remodel of all three floors of an existing three-family dwelling. However, the footnote in the appeals states that it has been indicated to this office that this is a fire rebuild. However, the records indicate that the existing structure was two-and-a-half-story building, and this is a proposed full three-story -- a three-story building.
Okay. Do you have any concerns about the building code?
Just needed to put that on the record for amplification.
Okay. Would anyone like to be heard on this matter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Fareed Desosis from the Mayor's Office. After our abutters meeting with the Mayor's Office, would like to go on record and support this project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Lee Blazi, City Councilor, Tim McCarthy's office. Council would like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion for approval with the two provisos. One, a BRA Design Review, and the second is that no building code relief be granted.
Okay. Second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Okay. You're all set, those in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling BZC, BOA number 370616, 37 Babson Street, Ward 18. This is a request to demolish the existing building and erect a new four-story building for a charter school. Violation is Article 12, Section 3, lots in a B/ I district adjacent to a residential district. This is -- rear yard is a budding of residential district, and Article 60, Section 16, the use, elementary or secondary school, is conditional. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Bob Baldwin, 74 Willow Road, Nahonton, Massachusetts, and I have with me Caleb Dolan from the Kip Academy Charter School.
47 Hillburn Street in Boston.
Okay, so conditional use and a couple of dimensional violations, but otherwise, you've managed to get through the community process positively?
That is correct. This was an Article 80 large project review voted last Thursday, and we held three community meetings.
Okay. Would like to be heard on this matter in favor. Fareed?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, mine of interest, Representative Carpenter Senior would like to go on record and support on this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Fareed Desosis from the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support this project after our community meetings. Everyone's on support of it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Lee Blazi, City Councilor, Tim McCarthy's office. The Council would like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Gary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Gary Walker, Electrician's Local 103, would like to speak in support also. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else want to speak on this charter school matter? Okay, how many schools -- is this one of the MATT schools?
This is the Kip Academy. It's their first charter school in Boston.
And is that an elementary or secondary? What is it?
K through eight. It'll serve 588 students in MATTAMIAN.
All right, what's the pleasure?
Motion to approve a BRA Design Review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling BZC number 33-650, 115 Florida Street, Ward 16. This is a request to erect a three-family dwelling. Violations are Article 65, Section 9, lot width, lot frontage, side yards, all insufficient, floor area ratio, and building height excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 416 West Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Chairman, this is an application for infill three-family housing in Dorchester, Florida Street, a neighborhood that is zoned 3F 5,000. As the presentation, which I have submitted to the Board, evidences, the building is remarkably consistent in size and massing and density with surrounding properties. With respect to the zoning violations, there is a lot width and frontage insufficiency. The fact of the matter is, the lot width and thereby -- therefore, the frontage is, again, remarkably consistent with other properties on this block. There is a small FAR violation. Somewhat curiously, even though this is a 3F 5,000 district characterized by triple deckers, as the Board can see from the photographic evidence submitted to the Board, there is a height limit here of two-and-a-half stories and 35 feet, hence the two violations for building -- the violation for building height excessive. The side yard insufficiency occurs as the Board looks at the site on the right side of the property. The petitioner actually owns the property to the right, so it's essentially an encroachment onto his own land where he has a driveway anyway separating the proposed building from the existing three-family where the side yard encroachment occurs. As I say, otherwise, it's a very typical three-family infill construction.
And you're proposing three parking spaces?
Yes, there's three spaces in the rear, in the rear yard, Mr. Rajaro.
All right, great. Any comments from the architect?
Oh, the drawings are accurate.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to comment on this? Alec?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Alec Benelli, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record and support. They've been very cooperative with both the Civic Association and the abutters who are in support, so we'd like to go on record in support of BRA Design Review.
Okay, thank you. Hi.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Amy Frigiletti, Council Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
What was your name, Amy?
Amy Frigiletti.
Okay, welcome. I don't know if we've met before. Thank you. Paul?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor Michael Flaherty, would like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Who else would like to be heard on the Florida Street? Okay. It's a pleasure of the Board.
Motion for approval, BRA Design Review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Calling BZC -- no, calling BOA number 36-8380, 77 to 83 Hancock Street, Ward 15. Is the applicant here for Hancock Street?
So.
This is a request to remove the proviso. Come sit at the table, please. This is a request to remove the proviso to this petitioner only from the prior board decision and grant a 36A takeout to a new business. Violation is Article 7, Section 4, other conditions necessary as protection. Your name and address for the record, please.
Carlos DePina, 26.
You're going to have to move forward and speak up, okay?
Carlos DePina, 26 Clarus Street, Roxborough.
All right. Are you the operator of this business?
Yes.
And what's the name of it?
The vendor for Taro Taro.
Okay. Have you operated a restaurant before in Boston with a takeout license?
No, no. Actually, I have a manager to help me.
Which neighborhood is this again? Dorchester?
Hancock.
Hancock, okay. Who's speaking on behalf of Mayor's Office? Anyone? Flavio?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Explain to us if this gentleman has been apprised of all the responsibilities that come with a takeout license?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We've been working with Main Street, Upphams Corner Main Street. They're in a transition period right now. They have an interim director. We're working with them to get, provide some support, both from D and D and BRA to improve his storefront as well, so we'll go on record in support of this takeout.
Both in Geneva or Upphams?
This is Upphams Main Street.
Okay. Thank you. Amy?
Yep, Amy Frigiletti. Council Baker's office would also like to go on record in support.
Good. Anyone else want to be heard on this takeout license? No? Okay.
Motion to approve with the Board's usual takeout language to this applicant only. Is there any exterior work to be done or signage?
Peter, that's probably a good precaution to just put it down.
Yeah, for signage, grates.
For the front design review.
I'm sure Main Street's, Main Street's has its druthers on these things, but let's do it anyway with the BRA, okay? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sir. Good luck with your business.
Calling BZC number 33-645, 10 Chamblin Street, Ward 13. This is a request to change legal occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a group residence with offices. Violation is Article 50, Section 28, used transitional housing is conditional. Your name and address for the record, please.
Matt Pritchard, 10 Chamblin Street, Boston.
Mike Whitmore, 46 Allen Place.
Okay, what are you building?
The existing building at 10 Chamblin is currently occupied as a three-family dwelling. Prior to that, it was a substance abuse recovery program as a group residence general. The use evolved into supporting family housing, and what we're requesting is to change that use to transitional housing as opposed to the as-of-right three-family dwelling that currently is the certificate.
This is a Victory Program.
Yes, sir.
So is this the equivalent of Scattersite Housing?
No, it's actually family housing for homeless families and providing those services on a longer-term basis.
And how many families?
Depending on family size, we would have up to 21 individuals, so we expect in the range of five, six families, depending on family size.
Is there onsite management in terms of programming and that kind of stuff?
24-hour supervision.
And other programming in terms of transitioning folks back to?
Absolutely. It's typically a two-year program through the Department of Housing and Community Development. All of the families living there are referred by DHCD, and there's a considerable requirement of getting jobs, getting education, childcare.
Okay. Yeah, I'm familiar with the program. I know you do good work. How'd you make out with the neighborhood, the abutters and the community?
It was really wonderful, actually. We've been there for 40 years. There's no neighborhood association to speak of, but we have a very close relationship with all of the abutters, and Kyra Fox, Mayor Walsh's neighborhood liaison facilitated a meeting that.
I'm going to let her speak and tell her story now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I, Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record of support. We had the abutters meeting last week, and it was very well-attended with all the neighboring abutters. They have great things about Victory Programs since they have taken over from the previous silver homes. The upkeep is wonderful and they support the project 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Boston City Councilor Tito Jackson, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Bill?
City Councilman Matt O'Malley would like to also go on record in support.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilman Michael Flaherty would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Councilor Michelle Wu, would like to go on record in support.
What was your name, Henry? Henry Cohen. I don't know if you've been up here before. Welcome. Thank you. Who else would like to be heard on this matter?
Can I ask a question? Is this, is this the same Victory Program that has a national? Is this a national endeavor or just a Boston?
It's Boston-based nonprofit.
Has no relation to the Victory Program in Philadelphia?
No, sir.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval to this applicant only.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set. Thank you, gentlemen.
Calling BZC number 33625, 1619 to 1621 Tremont Street, Ward 10. This is a request to change illegal occupancy from four apartments and tavern to four apartments and tavern with live entertainment. Violation is Article 59, Section 15, the use is conditional in neighborhood business district where the live entertainment is operating after 10:00. Your name and address for the record, please.
Finnbar Murray, 1621 Tremont Street, Mission Hill.
And what's, what's the establishment again?
Flann O'Briens.
Looking for entertainment after 10:30.
Well, we actually have an entertainment license right now and we've had one since 1990. And I have a copy of it here. We have an entertainment license for instrumental music and for cassette, radio, jukebox, TV, widescreen TV, and a trivia license. And we're applying for a karaoke license to add to this.
Great. Anyone want to be heard on this matter? Shayna?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Shayna Alberg, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support of this. There was an abutters meeting where all the concerns of the abutters were addressed as well as the community alliance in Mission Hill that are also in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also have a letter from Mission Hill Main Streets in support as well. If you want to see it.
You can pass it to this woman. She'll give it to the file. Go ahead.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Natalia Penya from the Office of State Representative Jeffrey Sanchez. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Anyone else? On Tremont Street, Mission Hill. Okay, our turn.
Motion to approve.
Can you see this place from your house?
Absolutely.
Can you hear it?
I, yeah, actually not. They run a very good establishment there, don't they? They manage the block very well.
All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Calling BZC number 33648, 502 to 504 Mass Ave, Ward 9. This is a request to change illegal occupancy to include adult and children's classes and event space. Violation is Article 64, Section 8, adult and children's classes and event space is forbidden. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Dennis Quilty, Attorney at McDermott Quilty &amp; Miller, representing the applicant before you, the tenant of Tropicana Realty Little Lovage Baby Club. With me is Jess Ronalds, who is the owner and founder of this concept. It is a child and adult education and enrichment center. It's not a daycare center. It's for other parents and children together and for everybody to learn the parenting process, educational uses, and the like.
Is it finally going to teach parenting? Wow.
Who want to look at it?
Let me just ask you, is this something that's just not in the code? That's why it's forbidden?
Must be. That's, that's all I can think of. Okay. It's, we have a community, I'm sorry.
Sorry, so is this, who is your target audience, audience?
Um, yes, exactly.
She just had a baby about a week ago.
Yes. So expecting parents and anyone with children for, for zero to three, really.
And what's the events that you're talking about?
Um, the events are like birthday parties or, um, yeah, private parties, like baby showers.
Okay. We did have a, an abutters meeting conducted by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Very successful. Two, two neighborhood groups were contacted, no opposition.
504 is closer to the bridge or?
I didn't hear it.
Where's 504?
It's Mass and Tremont. It's actually, just about, just in from the corner of Mass Ave.
What is the current use of the space?
It was a...
Yoga studio.
Yoga studio.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jordan Dacey from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support. We had a community meeting. People think it's a great use of the space, the only concern being parking for the strollers. So as long as those aren't on the sidewalk blocking the space, we're confident supporting them.
All right, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Boston City Councilor Tito Jackson, would like to also go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Councilor Michelle Wu, would like to go on record in support.
Anybody else on Mass Ave? If not, motion please.
Motion for approval.
Okay, record. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed to this? Okay, you're all set. Good luck with your business.
Thank you. Calling 10 to 18 John Elliott Square, Ward 9. This is BOA number 365290. The applicant has written to withdraw their application, so I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Are you gentlemen here on Elliott Square?
These are abutters from the neighborhood for the project.
Well, we're going to, we're going to deny it because they've withdrawn their, their application. So it's pretty much dead.
Okay.
For now. All right, all those in favor of denial without prejudice?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed to it?
Calling 354 K Street, Ward 7. This is BOA number 363584. This is a request to change illegal occupancy from a one to a two-family dwelling. This violations are Article 14, Section 2, lot area for the additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, FAR excessive. Article 23, Section 1, off-street parking is insufficient. There is a companion case to this address. It's BOA number 363585. This is in reference, this is a building code violation. This is in reference to Section IRC, Chapter 2, Section 202. Dwelling unit definition, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, et cetera. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Julie O'Connor. I lived at 70 Simon Willard Road, Concord, Massachusetts. And I'm here in place of my son who has been called away on business.
Okay, we didn't hear all the violations, but my question, I guess, is are we adding living space or legalizing living space?
Oh, Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt. Bob, there are two issues here. One is to change the occupancy, but also there is a building code violation.
Oh, I see it now. Thank you. What is the building code violation, Mr. Designer? Will you identify us?
I have, you, you give me a moment.
Okay. Is it illegal, is it a two-family now?
No, it's a large, single family with four bedrooms.
We are creating new dwelling space.
Yes, but what we like to do is take the large, single family and create two units. But there'll be no change in the square footage and no change in the number of bedrooms. The only thing we're doing is changing the interior layout, so...
And is there parking, off-street parking on this site?
The unit is not com...
Is there a driveway?
Uh, no.
No.
Um, the, converting it into two units is consistent with the other abutting properties. And the house is actually larger square footage-wise right now than other abutting properties that are already two units.
Did you have a neighborhood meeting?
Uh, yes. My son distributed 100, over 120 leaflets to the abutting property owners and had a meeting on July 19th, met with the abutters. No one expressed any issues with the proposed plan. And Riley has reached out personally to all the direct abutters and they all have, he has all their support with what he wants to do.
Is there a change in the exterior in terms of ingress and egress?
No. I mean, you know, it'll, it will be, you know, there'll be proper, you know, doors and, you know, to get out of the apartment, whatever's to come, that, I mean, in the plans. Well, you are installing a new spiral stair off the third, second middle deck. Is that correct? Uh, you have the plans. I think they were planning on doing that, but...
Is that, is there something that sounded confusing about what that, that second dwelling unit was supposed to be? Is that what the building code violation is?
Well, the building code violations, this is one of the first times we've seen this one, which is Section 202. And it is a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more people. Basically, they're adding a unit, so I don't understand why the violation is necessarily building code violation.
There's no shared kitchen or anything like that then?
No, no. I mean, it is a separate, separate unit, separate means of entrance into it.
So there's separate entrance and egress?
It does have a separate entrance and it does have an egress vis a vis the spiral stair that goes from the second floor deck to the first floor deck. I put a slot, but the real question on building code violation, whether the use of the spiral stairs, the second means of egress, but they didn't cite that. Uh, I just also wanted to say that the unit will be owner-occupied. My son is planning on living there and he's making a significant, you know, improvement in the property. Nothing, you know, just in the interior, but nothing besides, I guess, the spiral staircase is changing in the exterior.
Let's hear about the public reaction. Who wants to be heard on this matter, the Mayor's Office? Eric? No, I asked myself. Do you think there's anything else?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record and state that we have received zero community opposition in this. We did have an abutters meeting. Actually, no one showed up. There were people walking around from the abutting houses and saw us. They didn't stop by. The one concern we would, we do have is adding a unit without parking in the South Boston neighborhood, which as you all know, it's pretty hot right now. So other than that, there has been no community opposition.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, the issue of the building code violation is still outstanding. This member doesn't understand, quite frankly, the site and as to why there is the building code violation. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to deny the building code violation because it's not clear to me what it is and what it is that we're being asked to approve.
That makes sense. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Okay. Chris? We're denying the appeal of it. No, we're denying the building code.
We're denying the building code violation. We're, we are not granting building code relief.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristina M, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan. We'd like to go on record in opposition just because of the fact that we're not sure if the fly-in was really done for this project. Just with a no parking violation on this, it's just hard to believe that no one in the neighborhood would not come to this meeting. So we would like to just go record opposition. Thank you.
So there is, there is no parking violation, right?
There is parking.
There is a parking violation, okay.
The use is conditional. I think it's conditional.
Mr. Chair, members of, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilman Michael Flaherty. Just due to the parking issues, this particular time, the council cannot support the project.
Okay. Anyone else? So, we've got a couple of...
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion for denial without prejudice. And the reason it's denial without prejudice, I think the project does have merit. It's been inadequately presented in terms of both its merits and exactly what the building code violation was. So should you come back next time, at least have your architect here so that you can comment on, comment on the building code.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? So denial without prejudice would really reduce the clarity of what we're being asked to approve. So you're welcome to reapply and have better plans. The building code was a concern. We want to clarify that with ISD if you're ever perceived, okay?
Good try, pinch hitting. Calling BZC number 33628, 28 Woodward Street, Ward 7. This is a request to erect a four-story building for three residential units and parking. Violations are Article 14, Section 1, minimum required lot, lot areas insufficient. Article 14, Section 2, lot area for the additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Lot width insufficient. Article 14, Section 4, lot frontage insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, FAR excessive. Article 17, Section 1, usable open space insufficient. Article 18, Section 1, front yard insufficient. Article 19, Section 1, side yard is insufficient. Article 20, Section 1, rear yard is insufficient. And Article 23, Section 9, design of off-street parking facilities. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Niall Sutcliffe. I'm the architect of the project. My office is at 197 8th Street in Charlestown. 28 Woodward Street was originally designed and filed at ISD as a three-family building, four stories high with a parking garage on grade. At that time, it had a floor area ratio of 2.6. At the neighborhood and Civic Association presentations, it became clear that these groups believed that the floor area ratio was excessive. And so my client then agreed to redesign the project. We removed the entire top floor of the building completely. Building is now three stories. These are the drawings that you currently have in your hand. And there are two dwelling units now with a three-car garage. Floor area ratio is 1.80. We requested the board accept the current drawings in your hands dated 8/12/2014 as the record set of drawings for this project.
How does this affect your violations, Mr. Sutcliffe?
Say again?
How, how does this change affect your violations?
It reduces the floor area ratio. I think that's the only one I can think of.
Probably height and...
No, it's in a H150 district, so the height was, height was not an issue.
So why would, I guess I'm, I'll follow up on that question. Why is there a need for variance?
Well, we still have all the other setback issues, rear yard, et cetera. And so we're still asking for the majority of those viol, of those variances.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Rosani?
Drawings are adequate. In fact, it shows three parking spaces for two units.
Okey-dokey. Who wants to be heard on this matter? Eric? Chris?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support with also adding the proviso of BRA design review. During the community process, they have listened to the community. What they, they start off with a dense three-family. Through the Civic Association meetings and the abutters meetings, they realized that the community would be more open to a two-family, so they're presenting today. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristina M, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, echoing the sentiments of the Mayor's Office, would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Paul Sullivan, City Councilman Michael Flaherty would like to go on record in support.
Thank you very much. Anybody else to be heard on this case? In favor, opposition, anything?
Just have one more question. It appears that the first unit has an ADA lift to it.
That's correct.
And there's access to the roof. Is there a roof deck proposed?
Uh, no, there is none.
There is none?
Mm-hmm.
Is this an anticipation of a roof deck?
Uh, no, no anticipation.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, BRA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And can we have clarification on exactly what variances are being requested, given the change in the design?
Okay, I will confirm that. Okay, I will confirm that, how would you like it confirmed in a?
Well, after designer's view, if there's any issues, you can come back here, obviously. Okay.
Yes, it sounds like the usable open space would have gone down a little bit, and I don't know why off-street parking is cited as, as access and maneuverability, but this was for, for dwellings.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Calling BZC number thirty-three, six-fifty-one, twenty-three Linden Street, Ward seven. This is a request to confirm the legal occupancy as a single-family dwelling and to erect two dormers. Violation is Article fifteen, Section one, FAR excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rena Giftopolis, and I live at one eighty-five I Street in South Boston. I'm, that's where I have my business too, I'm the architect.
So we have a couple of dormers, or is there anything complicated here, or we don't miss anything?
Well, the reason for the dormers is to provide an attic fire egress from the building, and which requires dormers from that third floor.
The occupancy of the building?
We're not changing the occupancy, it's still single-family, it's just to provide a third-floor egress.
Wants to be heard on Linden, Linden, Eric?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support with the proviso of BRA design review. During a abutters meeting, all the members, community members of the street came out in support of this couple who moved in recently. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristin M. on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, like to go on record in support.
Anybody else want to be heard on this matter, in favor or opposition or anything? Okay, I guess it's up to the board.
Motion for approval, BRA design review.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All set, go back to your house.
Calling, the address of this project is BZC number, sorry, the address is twenty-six to twenty-eight Marine Road, Ward seven. BOA number thirty-six, seventy-four, thirty, is the applicant here for Marine Road? This is.
Good morning, Kevin Martin.
This is a request to replace the rear deck. Violation is Article nine, Section one, side yard is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Martin, twenty-six Marine Road, South Boston, oh-two-one-two-seven.
What are the issues with your deck, are they pre-existing dimensional problems?
We're actually reducing it by about six inches, but it's just not in conformity with what was on record.
Who wants to be heard on this matter, Eric?
Earning my money today. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support, as the proponent probably told you, that this is a variance for actually reducing his deck by six inches. Thank you.
Don't you get paid more for being from South Boston, Eric? Don't, don't the South Boston reps get paid more, though, for the?
They show.
Yeah.
I agree with that. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristin M. on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, we'd like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, like to go on record in support.
Okay, anybody else, Marine Road, want to be heard? Okay, ready for a motion? Motion for approval, BRA review? Something that small?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Real set, sir.
Thank you.
Calling BZC number thirty-three, three-oh-three, six-forty-nine to six-forty-nine, H East Broadway, Ward six. This is a request to change the legal occupancy from a one-family dwelling and barber shop to a two-family dwelling and yogurt shop. Also to erect a vertical and rear addition to the building. Violation is Article fifty-seven, Section twenty-six, off-street parking insufficient; Article fifty-seven, Section nine, lot size insufficient to accommodate the new dwelling units, floor area excessive, usable side, open space and side yards both insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is George Maransky, I'm an attorney with a business address at four sixteen West Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Chairman, members, this application, application was originally submitted to restore the building as a three-story building by adding one floor above the existing stories and changing ground floor nail salon into a yogurt shop. I've submitted revised plans to the board, it's a much simpler and more straightforward application. Now, my client does not seek to add a vertical addition to the building, does not seek to add an additional dwelling unit. This is simply an application to change the existing nail salon on the ground floor into a yogurt shop and perform just some interior renovations to that unit to bring it into compliance with the code. The lot size violation has been eliminated owing to the elimination of the proposed additional dwelling unit. The FAR violation may, may not remain just upon reconfiguration of the first floor space, but the building will not be expanded outside of its footprint or vertically. The usable open space violation has been eliminated. The side yard violation is a pre-existing nonconformity, and of course, the insufficient off-street parking violation has been eliminated since no unit is being proposed.
So we're just changing a commercial use that's totally palatable to the neighborhood?
And at some point, it'll become a takeout?
Uh, probably, not at this point. And I do want to point out, because I, I know that one of the abutters is here, that there was discussion at one of the meetings that we had on site, the door to the yogurt shop is depicted on the plans as being on the left side, next to the abutters property. That will not occur on that side, we will make sure that that's either in the middle of the building or over next to the residential entrance on the right side of the building.
Okay, who wants to be heard on this matter? Usually we let, I'll let you go first, because, yeah.
Mary Mae Lari, I'm representing my father, Frank Di Giacomo, six fifty-one East Broadway, who's lived there for sixty years. He does own the alleyway, and he's very concerned about the garbage problem and the fact that we've had a rat problem in that direct building before, in previous years, and he wants to make sure that the garbage is taken care of appropriately, and he wants to know where they're going to store the garbage. Also, his alleyway is rite of use only, he doesn't want the trash barrels in his alleyway, and that's about it right now.
All right, we'll make sure that that's on the record, and when they go for a takeout license, you'll be notified, or your father will be, because those are the very issues that takeout licenses are supposed to monitor and address, okay?
But all for our storage, of course, will be handled on-site, not at the abutters outlet.
Okay, Eric, probably better to have a few, you know, yogurt things than the nail salon chemicals, but, Eric?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support, echoing the statements of the director of abutter, but we also feel that this will be a good addition to Broadway, a lot better than a vacant storefront. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristin M. on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, we'd like to go on record in support, we're excited to see something in the space and not a vacant space. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, like to go on record in support.
Okay, anybody else want to be heard on Broadway?
Will there be exterior signs on the?
Uh, yes, Mr. Earl, there will be some exterior changes.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board, BRA design review, so?
Motion to approve with BRA design review, particularly in regard to the side.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Calling one sixty-five I Street, Ward seven, BZC number thirty-three, six-twenty-nine. This is a request to change the legal occupancy from two apartments and a store to three apartments. Violation is Article fourteen, Section two, lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient; Article fifteen, Section one, FAR is excessive, this is due to the basement extension; Article seventeen, Section one, usable open space insufficient; Article twenty-three, Section one, off-street parking is insufficient. There is also building code violation, this is in reference to number fifty-four nineteen, Section one-ten, eighteen point one, minimum number of exits. Your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanoff, ninety-three F Street. I bring before you a condominium building, the owners have asked me to help them clean up a couple of issues. First, ISD has this as a store and two-family, it's been on the books on the assessors as a three-family since nineteen eighty-seven, and condoized, and the owners have been there several years, not knowing that ISD had it listed such, so request a change of use. The other issue is the second means of egress, I'm proposing in this new set of drawings, adding a second door in the back of the unit. They, there was, as you can see, this was a store at one time, when they renovated it, they used the door on the side for mechanical room, so it's a common.
So you've addressed the building code, or has he?
Well, there is, you've added a door, but it's off the bedroom, okay, and you can't use an exterior door, access from the bedroom.
If there's no, as a studio, there's no door for the bedroom.
So you're arguing that it's not a bed, it's a sleeping area?
Sleeping area, correct. And there's a, there's a passageway right there in the right of ground.
We accept that. One other question, what is the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
About seven foot eight.
Seven, seven foot eight?
Yep, it's adequate.
Chairman, I make a motion to grant the building code relief requested, because as the architect has certified, it is not a bedroom, it's simply a sleeping outdoor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the other, is, is the other just really a, an error at ISD that they, it never got converted when it was converted to residential?
Well, I, I'm not sure what the history is, but I might surmise that the unit may have been converted illegally from a store to a dwelling, therefore, there'd be no reason for ISD to know that.
Okay.
And since once that had been done, a, the condominium, changing it to a condominium is simply purely a real estate transaction that is beyond scrutiny of anybody else. So I think that that's probably what the history is.
Yeah.
And so this goes, so, I mean, here again, where we are is we are legitimatizing something that was illegally done.
Okay, well, let me take this moment, and I thought this was just a technical, physical work thing, but Eric?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. I would like to bring up a concern of my office that the depth of the basement apartment is very much below grade, and that's our, really, our only issue, the, the occupancy issue, it, ever since I was a kid, that's been an apartment, so, thank you.
Well, they have adequate ceiling height, we're told, so that's, you know, that's the only reason that.
Well, the, the question, though, is that the means of, second means of emergency egress out of the basement is through an areaway.
Through what?
And it appears through an areaway, and it appears that the areaway is actually on somebody else's property.
There's a property line right there, yes.
Excuse me?
Yes, you're correct. The building's right, it's right on our street.
So the areaway then is on city property or private property?
City.
And, and that's not a violation?
It wasn't cited such, those are, I, I'm, I'm, that's existing.
Okay.
There's two, there's two small areaways with windows.
So it's a sleeping dog?
Well, I mean, it's, sleeping dog is also dangerous, is there a grate over it?
No, they're, they're semicircular, they're relatively.
Line shows, right-hand side.
And the, and the photo we have shows a car park right there.
Cars do park on the side. It's, it's one of those one-way inlets.
Private way.
Private way.
What, what the documents show is that they're cleverly labeled because the space downstairs is not labeled a bedroom.
Right, it's not.
By chosen an, an emergency egress out of a room called the den, but next to the den is the largest bathroom in the unit.
Yeah, it's the second bathroom.
Chris?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristin M. on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan. At this time, the council is not ready to support this project, all the questions that the board seemed to have was questions that abutters seemed to have at the meeting, and I don't think there was any clarification there to really get that support. We have a concern of what this actual unit will be in the basement, the plans that our office received just said unfinished space, and there was a bathroom in the corner, we really don't know what that means, we would like a little bit more clarification for the abutters, and to address, too, the fact that if they do need a parking spot, if they are adding an additional unit, we would like them to find parking for that, too. Thank you.
Well?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, just like to echo the sentiments of the council president's office, and the council needs, needs more information on this project.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to defer this, because I think it is a worthwhile project, but there are two issues that have to be dealt with. This, we would like to see documentation on exactly what that area well is like and how it works. If, in fact, it is in a parking zone or a parking lane, then we can't count it as an areaway, and that would then seriously limit the use of that downstairs space to that which cannot have sleeping facilities at all.
I just have a question, Mr. Stefanoff, is this third unit that we're basically legalizing, has it been occupied, or was the original developer still holding it?
Oh, it's been occupied.
Okay. All right, what's the second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Looking at December ninth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Calling BZC, calling eight oh four, East Third Street, Ward six, number BOA thirty-six, fifty-three, forty-five. This is a request to create off-street parking for two vehicles. Violation is Article nine, Section one, extension of a nonconforming use, this is not in compliance to the proposed rear two-car parking. Article seventeen, Section one, usable open space is insufficient; Article twenty-three, Section nine, design of off-street parking. Your name and address for the record, please.
William Doyle, eight oh four, East Third Street, South Boston, Mass.
All right, who's going to tell us about the parking plans, Mr. D'Amico or Mr. Rosani?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. I reviewed the plan, and it's a little tight, it's two spaces, eight foot one inch by twenty for two spaces, and there's a ten-foot road that they would have to back into, which is tight, but it can be done, it, it is doable.
Is there on-street parking on that side of the street?
No.
This is actually behind the property, it's.
But to access your driveway, is there parking on that side of the street?
No, it's actually, they built a new building next to me, and they moved it over a few feet, so they gave us a private alleyway to get down to me, there's no parking in the alleyway.
So it's shared, a shared alley?
Yes.
It is shared?
Yeah, but there'll be, there'll be parking, parking the alleyway.
Okay.
Who wants to be heard on this parking issue? Eric?
We did have a meeting, an abutters meeting, everybody approved it, okay?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support, as the proponent was stating, Joe Hassel had a project on P Street a few, a year and a half ago, he granted all the abutters along Third Street an easement that probably two months ago, Alicia Simpson from eight hundred East Third Street came in and got approved for the same thing. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristin M. on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, echoing the sentiments of the mayor's office, like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, like to go on record in support.
Anybody else to be heard on East Third?
Motion for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sir, we got your parking.
Thank you.
Calling seven fifty-two, East Fourth Street, Ward six, BOA number thirty-seven, fourteen, twenty-seven. This is a request to change the legal occupancy from a. This is a request to change a legal occupancy from a lodging house with nine lodges and one apartment to four residential units with decks and roof deck. Violations are Article 14, Section 2, lock area for the additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, FAR excessive. Article 17, Section 1, Usable Open Space insufficient. And Article 23, Section 1, Off-Street Parking insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Maransky, I'm the Attorney Business Address of 416 West Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Chairman, this is also a.
Excuse me, Counselor, Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from this. The drawings are labeled with the name of a current client, and it would be inappropriate for me to vote on this project, although we have nothing to do with it.
Was the proposal the same as this?
No.
Mr. Bizani?
No, no, it's an entirely different proposal.
So.
No, just for the sake of appearance and form, I would rather accuse myself.
Okay, no problem.
Short sweep, I need to be paid twice.
Just add 20 more cases to cover it. All right.
This, so this is a very straightforward matter, Mr. Chairman. This is an existing lodging house. My clients simply plan to convert it to four residential units. They're intended to be condominium units for sale. Minimal changes to the building, it's, it's really simply interior changes and some improvements to the exterior. No, no addition in terms of the footprint of the building, no roof deck. There was an onsite meeting held, and to my knowledge, there is no opposition to this matter.
When was it last used as a legal?
Very, very recently, Mr. Chairman. And just as an aside, I think that there's a great deal of interest in the community. The scene is taken off the world as a lodging house. There was a very tragic incident that occurred here within the past couple of years.
Who wants to be heard on this area? East Fourth.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services would like to go on record and support. As the attorney, George Maransky, stated, the community is looking forward to get rid of this, the past of this building. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Abbott, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, echoing the sentiments of the Mayor's Office, would like to go on record and support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, would like to go on record and support.
Anybody else on East Fourth wanted to be heard? Sir? You in this case? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval with BRA Design Review and no building code relief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have another case that we've done with?
Yes, calling BZC number 33656, 543 Beach Street, Ward 18. Okay, the applicant is not here, so I'm going to make a motion for the denial without prejudice.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any of the applicants scheduled for 10:30 requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? Your address, please.
3442 Warren Street, Charlestown.
Give me a minute, please. Calling BZ, calling 34 to 42 Warren Street, Ward 2, BZC number 32912. This is a request to erect a two-story addition to the building for nine residential units, retail space, and parking garage. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning commission. My name is Michael McCormick, and my business address is number 1 International Place, Boston. I represent Nova Partners LLC, and at this time, I'm requesting a withdrawal without prejudice, please.
Take the motion for the denial without prejudice.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other applicants requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? Your address, please.
It's to St. Martin, it's.
Can you please sit at the table?
Okay.
Calling BZC number.
3700.
To St. Martin Street, Ward 2, BOA number 370095. This is a request to change a legal occupancy from a two to a three-family dwelling, erect a two-story addition, decks and roof deck. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Philip Turesco, architect, business address 110 Broad Street, Boston.
What are you requesting?
We requested deferral.
Why can't you proceed today?
Neighbors have asked, Mayor's Office has suggested further meetings. I'm the new architect on the block, I want to work with the client and the neighbors, please.
Make a motion so we can get on the record.
Make a motion for the deferral.
All those in favor of deferral?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just hang on, guys.
We'll see you back on December 9th at 11:30.
December 9th, 11:30. Is that what we're doing now, or is it 1 o'clock?
Um, December, the next meeting would start at 12:30.
12:30 December 9th, okay?
No, 11:30 December 9th. Yes. Okay? Any other applicants requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases?
Do we need to do anything between times? The people recording us in the back, do you need to change the reels or something? Are you okay? I guess you're okay. All right, let's.
One minute.
One minute?
You want one minute? 30 minutes?
In half an hour, you need to change, okay? Calling BZC number 33617, 101 Kilmarnoch Street, Ward 21. Is anybody here for this parking lot?
Kilmarnoch Street.
I'm going to hold that for a minute. Calling BZC number 33657, 846 to 848 East Broadway, Ward 6. This is a request to erect a third-floor addition, roof deck and rear deck. Violation is Article 15, Section 1, FAR excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanoff, 93 F Street. I bring before you a renovated, renovated project. The client purchased a two-family and wishes to expand the second unit for their own use, leaving the first unit in place. This pushes me slightly up over the allowable FAR. There's also another item on the violation comments I want to bring to your attention. Mr. Mark Joseph has cited a note requiring sprinklers due to height. I just want to say, I've spoken to him about this, and he misunderstood the, the building, so I don't need any relief for that. The building is not required to be sprinkled, and it's not excessively high.
Because you're keeping it a two-family?
Keeping it a two-family, and from, he didn't realize, I brought him photographs from the street on 30 feet to the roof.
So we'll make a motion to deny building code relief?
Yes.
There is no, there is no relief attached to it.
I know, but he put the note on the page, so I just want, for the record, I want it.
Let's just do it at the end if it prevails.
Oh, they usually do do that, though. That's, that's just the usual footnote they have.
Regarding the plans for their addition, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
And how about the roof deck and the rear decks? Did I mention some of those?
They're not mentioned, the rear decks exist, the roof deck is proposed new.
All right, who wants to be heard on this matter? East Broadway.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services would like to go on record and support. The directed butters were in support of this project at the neighborhood meeting, but I would like to add the proviso of BRA Design Review. Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Abbott, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, like to go on record and support.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council, Michael Flaherty, would like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Anybody else on East Broadway? Okay, now we can make a motion.
Motion for approval, BRA Design Review, and no building code relief granted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Calling 249 Newbury Street, Ward 5. This is BOA number 364885. This is a request to change legal occupancy from two apartments, beauty salon, and exercise studio to two apartments, beauty salon, and restaurant with U side of number 37 and 36A takeout use. Violations are Article 8, Section 7, U side of number 36A. Takeout is conditional, as is U side of number 37, the restaurant is conditional. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, again, Dennis Quilty, attorney at McTernan Quilty &amp; Miller, representing the proposed tenant of the owner of the building, Linear Retail. The proposed tenant is a gelato shop known as Amarino. I've only had four of them to hand out, but you get a sense of the high-quality product that they serve. This is.
Very, very aware, very familiar with this. Are you a franchise owner, or are you with the company?
I am with the franchisee.
This is Leah S. Portes, who would be the operator of this site.
Have you worked with Amarino before?
Yes, in France.
Where?
In France, Paris.
It's probably the nicest store I've ever been in, next to my store.
It would've been nice if you brought some samples off.
I mean, the takeout, did you understand the takeout responsibility?
Yes, yes, we've been, we've had a meeting with the neighborhood association. You know, they've actually been able to, since that meeting, by the way, create an internal trash storage room in the building. The landlords agreed to do that, so with that, we think.
Is this the first one in the United States?
Uh, no, we have two stores in New York, and this is the first one in Massachusetts.
Well, wish you well. Boston just got a gift. Who wants to be heard on this?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chain Auburn, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval.
This is the usual takeout language.
Usual takeout language, and who?
Architectural Commission, yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Calling 20 to 26 Charles Street, Ward 5. This is BOA number 366372. This is a request to change a legal occupancy from 45 residential units, retail store and restaurant with U side of number 37 and 36A to include an auction house. Violation is Article 8, Section 7, the use is forbidden since it's not listed. Your name and address for the record, please.
For the record, Warren S. DeCara, Nixon P. Pity, 100 Summer Street. Joining me are Michael and Lucy Grogan. They are the proprietors of Grogan &amp; Company, which is a well-respected in the field of fine arts. They've been in the business for 30, 35 years. Started out in Boston, out to Dedham, and now they want to come back to the city. This is the commercial units, as one enters Charles Street from Beacon Street. They've always been commercial. Room with a view was there previously, a similar antiques, fine arts facility. Their business model has them having usually four auctions a year. This is not a foreclosure of Paul Saperstein kind of auction, but for the sake of the code, it's the same section, and that's why it's forbidden on Charles Street, even though it's a commercial street. The last time they had one of these auctions, they had about 15 people, because a lot of people now bid electronically. The world has changed dramatically from when you saw the movies of people, you know, touching on the ear and buying a Renoir or something. And their items are mostly smaller. They've met with the other residents and the owners of that building. They've met with the civic association. The only request is a proviso that it be limited to this family business so that, in fact, another more aggressive auction use cannot be in there, and the Grogans are more than happy to do so. Where no work will be done, except they're going to fix a bathroom or something. No exterior work whatsoever, no architectural commission will be needed. If there's any questions, we're prepared to respond.
Shayna?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chain Auburn, Neighborhood Services. Just to echo the attorney's sentiment, he did meet with the civic association, and they did request a proviso that this goes with this petitioner only. We would like to go on record and support, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mohana Sadek, on behalf of Counselor Josh Saikum, would like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Council, Michelle Wu, would like to go on record and support.
Who else to hear on Charles Street?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chen, is it to this petitioner?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Love to hear.
Thank you.
Calling BZC number 33608, 107 Avenue, Louis Pasteur, Ward 4. This is a request to allow a food cart to sell food at this location. Violation is Article 8, Section 7, this use is forbidden. Article 18, Section 1, front yard is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
First name's Sam Sori, and my address is. Yep. First name's Sam Sori, and it's 654 Center Street, Jamaica Plain, Mass. 02120.
So you're operating the food cart on Louis Pasteur?
Yes, we've been operating since 1997 in that same location.
Filafle cake?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what else do we need to know?
Sammy's Filafle Wrap, so we've been there for quite some time. We are up to code with the health department. We made it into a mobile food cart, and we also have the support from Harvard, and.
Let me just get the elected officials on the record if they want to do so. Shayna?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chain Auburn, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record and support. As the applicant has stated, this has been there for a number of years. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
With all the.
With all the.
Is this going to need, is this like takeout or?
Food truck, definitely. It's a mobile food truck.
I know, but do we have provisos and all that to this owner only?
No.
No, we approved a few before.
No, I don't think we've ever put provisos.
No.
No, okay, then, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set, good luck.
Calling BZC number 33611, 73 to 75 Causeway Street, Ward 3. This is a request to continue the use as a fee-paid parking lot beyond the current expiration date. Violation is Article 6, Section 4, change in previous decision from the ZVA. This would be a parking lot with six vehicles. BZC number 33612, 19 to 21 Lancaster Street, Ward 3. Again, this is to continue the use of a parking lot with 17 vehicles beyond the current expiration date. Violation is Article 6, Section 4, change in previous decision for the VR, for the ZVA. And finally, BZC number 33613, 31 to 39 Lancaster Street, Ward 3. This is a request to continue the use as a parking lot for 31 vehicles beyond the current expiration date. Violation is the same as the previous. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Edward Gottlieb. My address is 309 Washington Street, Brighton, Massachusetts. And with me is Samuel Gottlieb, who is the operations officer at Stanhope Garage, which operates these three parking lots, which have been used together under one license for a number of years now, and we're seeking to continue that use for two to three years at the pleasure of the board.
Counselor, were you here for, or not here for Kilmarnoch Street? Is that?
For what?
Kilmarnoch Street? That's not yours, is it?
We haven't here, I didn't hear.
It's not yours?
Kilmarnoch Street is oddly, we all know.
Okay, but right now, let's just talk about Causeway.
How many are you here to do?
I am here to do.
You can't do them all together, but I just want to know how many are you doing?
I'm here to do five.
Okay. So you miss Kilmarnoch Street, we'll, we'll do that in this row, too.
That's fine.
Great, this is a program. Are you doing Shawmit, too?
Shawmit?
Kingstone, Lancaster, Causeway, and Kilmarnoch.
Kilmarnoch and Ripplank.
And what?
It's a fanwinkle. Okay, good, so go ahead with this first one and just tell us what we need to know.
Again, these three parcels have been used for public parking for a number of years now, and we're here to ask the board's approval to continue that use for another two to three years at the pleasure of the board. years at the pleasure of the board. The present use expires December thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. And the neighborhood? Who wants to speak for the neighborhood? Nicole?
Nicole Leo May is Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has been to the Downtown North Association. However, they have not been to the West End Civic Association. There is a representative here from the civic group today, and they do have an agreement to go before their board on September fourth, and they did allow them to go forward today. We'd like to go on record and support for two years.
Chris?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Aben, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, echoing the sentiments to the mayor's office, would like to go on record and support.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Judy Evers, City Council, South Manhattan's Office, would like to support and record and support for two years.
Okay. Are these all in Nicole, Judy, Chris? Not all in your, that was the only one, they all in your district too?
They're all in mine.
Right. Just in the interest of time, the next time we call you, can you just put on the record all the iterations who have to do this every, for six cases?
Do you want me to?
No, when we call the next one.
Okay. No, so these three cases, and it looks like you've put in the planters for some work in there?
There are planters in there.
Yes.
There are permanent, there are permanent beds facing on Causeway Street and a permanent bed facing on Lancaster Street.
And good fencing, so.
And there's wrought iron fencing on all of them.
Okay, so I'm looking for plants in there, so.
I'm sorry?
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval.
For two years?
For two years.
Second. Senator?
Aye.
All those in favor? All steps again.
Calling BZC number thirty-three six sixteen, sixty-seven to ninety-three Kingston Street, Ward three. This is in Chinatown? This is in Chinatown?
This is in Chinatown.
Okay. This is a request to continue the use as a parking lot for thirty vehicles beyond the current expiration date. Violation is Article six, section four, change in previous decision from the ZBA. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Edward Gottlieb, three oh nine Washington Street, Brighton, Massachusetts. And with me is, again, Samuel Gottlieb, who's the operating officer here.
Okay, what's the?
This is, again, a request to continue for two to three years at the pleasure of the board.
Um, I just want to pull, see Mark's picture when he pulls it up.
Who wants to be heard on this one?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Aben, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, would like to go on record and support.
Danny, are you speaking on this, Danny Chen? No? Okay, fine. What's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, wait, is this next to the new building that's gone up?
No.
And Star Palm.
There's a little, a road between them, and then, okay.
Can I just offer something, Mr. Rojo? When we applied for the license on this, with the application, when we submitted the application, I went to Mister Chen because we could not find the actual parcel, your-
Isn't the one, the corner parcel that's up the, that's up the slope?
It is the corner parcel directly behind the hotel there, the big hotel.
Yep.
Okay.
The Hyatt Hotel. That's what it is, part of that parcel.
Okay.
All right. Motion for motion?
Motion for approval for two years.
Second. Second. Favor?
Aye.
Calling BZC number thirty-three six eighteen, one ninety-four to two hundred Shawmadaw, Ward three. This is a request to continue the use as a parking lot for eighty-nine vehicles beyond the current expiration date. Violations are the same as the previous. Again, your name and address for the record.
Edward Gottlieb, three oh nine Washington Street, Brighton, Mass. And with me is Sam Gottlieb, who's the operating officer of Stanhope Garage.
And this is in the south end?
That is in the south end, the corner of Shawmadaw Avenue and East Berkeley Street.
Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jordan D.C. from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record and support, but I would ask that the proponent come to the community. I understand this is pretty much standard procedure, but they didn't get any opportunity to talk to him. Although they're not in opposition, they would just like him to come to a meeting.
Okay.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Aben, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, would like to go on record and support.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? There's one issue there, is that the Drucker Company is proposing development there. I don't know the timeline for that.
Well, I don't know what the timeline is either, Mister Chen, but we are just tenants of the Drucker Company, so whenever they send us notice, we'll be going, I guess.
Motion for design, BRA design review for screening and buffering for two years.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, calling BZC number thirty-three six nineteen, twenty-three to twenty-five Anthony Ripdolanti Way, Ward three. This is a request for parking for ten vehicles. Violations are Article six, section three, additional conditions in a restricted parking district. Article ten, section one, limitation of off-street parking areas. Article twenty-three, section three, design of off-street parking. This is in size. And Article forty-six, section nine, forbidden for the proposed commercial parking. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Edward Gottlieb, three oh nine Washington Street, Brighton. And with me again is Samuel Gottlieb. This is a new facility. It is immediately across the street from an existing licensed lot at the other corner of Ripdolanti Way and Friends Street. It is under the same ownership as the existing, long-time existing lot, and was used for customer and employee parking by Mass Gas and Electric for years. And now they want to, Mass Gas and Electric no longer is in business down there, and they want to get this lot licensed if they could.
Okay. What do we hear on this?
Nicole Leo May is Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has been to the Downtown North Association and received support. Again, they are going to the West End Civic Association meeting on September fourth for their approval, but they are allowing them to go forward today. There is some question up at the BRA as to how many spots were actually going to be in this plot of land. I've talked to Sam and Edward, and they have said that there will only be ten. So we're asking that for ten spots in BRA design review, but we are in support.
Um, one of the violations is size. Are the spaces standard size?
All the space is shown on the plan which we submitted are at least of standard size.
Okay.
Well, not-
Well, we could have aisleways. They're tandem spaces.
Standard size would be eight foot six by twenty. The space is shown as seventeen foot six by nine, nine foot. So, I mean, from an area point of view, they're fine. The width is fine. We're six inches off on, actually, two and a half feet off on the length.
On the left.
Yeah, two and a half, two and a half, which means that it works for compact.
Also, it works in valet, though, isn't it? Isn't it?
Well, you know, valet is obviously, with the crunch factor, can get more vehicles then.
Okay. Nicole?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Aben, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, would like to go on record and support. The tenth space is with BRA design review.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to grant the relief requested for ten spaces, BRA design review for screening and buffering, and for a two-year period.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, bud.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bob D'Amico, BTD. I think this might be in a restricted parking district, and they may have the approval from the Pollution Control Commission.
They just need to do what they need to do.
Well, you need to-
So they have that already?
Hold on, I just need to pick that up.
I would hope so, but I mean, they do have a parking freeze in that area.
Okay. All right. Please, no, thank you. Kilmarnic, right?
Yep.
Calling BZC number thirty-three six seventeen, one oh one Kilmarnic Street, Ward twenty-one. This is a request to continue the use as a parking lot for fifteen vehicles beyond the current expiration date. Violation is Article seven, section four, change in previous decision from the previous ZBA proviso. Again, your name and address for the record, please.
Edward Gottlieb, three oh nine Washington Street, Brighton. And with me is Sam Gottlieb. This, again, is a long-time used parking facility, and it's been before the BRA for design review multiple times, and we're asking for an extension, again, two to three years at the board's pleasure.
The one down by Park Drive?
Yes.
Here's next to the church, right?
Yep.
The Russian church, whatever it is.
Make approval. Motion for approval. You have the fencing up, but to look at your signage, with BRA design review on your signage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Thank you. Calling BZC number thirty-three six sixty-four, two fifty-four to two fifty-six Friends Street, Ward three. This is a request to change legal occupancy from live-work artist loft and office to live-work artist lofts and to renovate. Violation is Article forty-six, section nine, use, live-work artist lofts are conditional. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patrick Sharkey. I'm the architect. My office is seventy-four Clarendon Street in Boston.
Okay. Do you have any questions or comments for us, Mr. Rosani?
No, drawings are adequate.
So this is a request to just change one unit?
That's correct. We, it's a five-story building. Back in two thousand and three, we converted the first four floors into artist lofts. The fifth floor had a business tenant.
Oh, I see.
And it was a long-term tenant. That tenancy is now over, so we wish to convert the top floor.
And is the BRA still keeping track of these live-work spaces?
I believe so.
Would like to be heard on this, friends. Nicole?
Nicole Leo May is Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has been to the neighborhood groups, and I have heard from a direct voter. There was a question in the BRA as to whether or not that they had actually registered this unit as artist live-work, so we're asking for BRA design review so we can have that issue worked out. But we're in support today.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Aben, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, would like to go on record and support with BRA design review.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, the West End Civic Association has voted that it is no objection to conversion of the fifth floor at two fifty-four Friends Street.
Can you just give us your name, sir? I don't know if you heard that.
I'm sorry. My name is Joseph McDonald. I'm chairman of the zoning board of the West End Civic Association.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the relief requested with the proviso, even though it's interior, for BRA design review, to pick up on whether or not the particular unit has been registered.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor? Okay, you're all set. Thank you.
Calling thirty-two to thirty-eight Bromfield Street, Ward three. This is BOA number thirty-five fifty-one sixty-eight. This is a request to remove the proviso to this petitioner only from the prior board decision and grant thirty-six A takeout use to a new business. Violation is Article six, section four, other conditions necessary as protection. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott Quilty and Miller, one thirty-one Oliver Street in Boston. With me is Abraham Smith, who is the proposed new operator and owner of Walking City Cafe LLC. Passed out the records, support letters from the Midtown Park Plaza Neighborhood Association as well as the Downtown Bid.
Who was the previous occupant of that site?
Pizzeria Rico. There was a Board of Appeal decision in nineteen ninety-eight. It's an existing takeout restaurant, pizzeria on Bromfield Street. That decision by the board limited the takeout use to Raymond Terrelli, who sold, has now sold the business to my client, so.
Has he been an operator of takeout license in Boston before, or no?
No, this is the first, first operation here. He has been working with the seller. He's actually been in there operating with the seller for a number of months now, and we've processed with this with the community group. We're looking to keep the pizzeria concept and also possibly introduce the Walking City Cafe concept as part of that. So it's been well-received in the community, and we're not looking for any changes to the capacity or the closing hour, simply to change from one operator to another.
Maybe a sign change, you're saying?
I'm sorry?
Maybe a sign change, right?
Yes, yeah.
Who wants to be heard on this? Danny? Chris?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Danny Chen, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has the support of the Downtown Bid and also the MPPNA, so we would like to go on record and support.
Excellent.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Aben, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, would like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard on Bromfield Street?
No.
Let's vote.
Motion for approval to this petitioner only, and the usual takeout.
Second. Would like design review, signing or anything?
No, you're maintaining everything, and it looks like you don't have grades, honestly.
Right, that's right.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, you know, set. Good luck, sir.
Calling two twenty-five Franklin Street, Ward three. This is BOA number thirty-six forty-eight seventy-two. This is a request to install a sculpture base. Violation is Article eight, section seven, use, an engineered sculpture is forbidden. Your name and address for a record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Joyce, Story Law Office, fifty Franklin Street, petitioner Equity Office Properties. I have to be this morning, Mr. Feltes, Equity Office. By way of background, in connection with the improvements of several of its lobbies in Boston, started several years ago.
Can we see that, please?
We made a commitment to provide display space for public eye throughout the city. As part of my package, I'm going to pass in a copy of a letter from Equity Office that fully describes the nature of the commitment that's been made.
Okay. This is simply the-
It's simply we're here to, with the public eye, to use it not the zoning code, therefore it's forbidden.
Looking at that picture, is there any concern for skateboarders coming down there and jumping off over there? Is this going to be monitored or watched?
The, it's, building has security, but the design of the base, you can see in the picture that the BRA approved, there's plates on it, so that forgets that from that.
I'm sure they'll find a way.
Okay. Who wants to be heard on this?
Danny Chen, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record and support.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Abbott, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linnahan, would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Council, Michelle Wu, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Motion, please. Cool. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Well said.
Calling one-thirty-eight to one-forty-four Lincoln Street, Ward Three. This is B O A number thirty-six, thirty-six, twenty-eight. Are you here for Lincoln Street?
I am, yeah.
Please have a seat at the table. This is a request to erect a headhouse and a roof deck. Violation is Article forty-four, Section nine, roof additions in a leather district. Also Article forty-four, Section eight, maximum height and F A R. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ben Rosenberg. Our address is one-forty-four Lincoln Street. My family's building, shops in the back door.
Is this residential? Residential.
The, the building, it's our, our shops in the basement. First and third floor are commercial tenants. The rest of the building is, is residential.
Okay. You have a plan for this, Mr. Bazani?
We, we do, Mr. Chairman. Drawings are adequate. One question, is access to the roof only from the top floor unit?
Yes.
Okay, so it's restricted to that tenant, don't?
Yeah, it's for theirs, for his use, yes.
Great. Who wants to be heard on Lincoln Street? Danny?
Danny Chang, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, let's have a motion to push this through.
Motion for approval, B R A design.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Okay. We're all set.
Calling ninety-Waltham Street, Ward Three. This is B O A number thirty-six, fifty-seven, twenty. It's a request to stop in mid-sentence.
He just put his hand up, so...
Going to take a two-minute break.
He's going to change the reel to reel. He makes the... We're going to get started again. Thanks for the indulgence on the break. Tape's all set. You know, I was just going to reiterate something. If you weren't here at nine-thirty, we're being taped now for cable TV. So this public process is even more transparent than ever was before. And so we have better sound system conversations, kind of impede that recording, but also we've added about forty to fifty percent more cases, so we're trying to manage our time a little more efficiently today and making sure that questions, both through us and from testimony, is all relevant and concise, just so we can try and expedite the backlog in applications for variances and building that we're experiencing in our beloved city during this economic time of growth. So just to let you know, we're doing more, and we're also putting it on TV, in case anyone needs something else to do after hours, or you can see us twice. Okay?
Calling ninety-Waltham Street, Ward Three. This is B O A number thirty-six, fifty-seven, twenty. This is a request to change legal occupancy from a lodging house for six people and two apartments to three residential units with rear decks and to renovate. Violations are Article sixty-four, Section nine, F A R is excessive, townhouse/rowhouse extension into the rear yard is conditional, Article sixty-four, Section thirty-four, restricted roof structure regulations, and finally Article thirty-two, Section nine, G cod. Your name and address for the record, please.
Dartania Brown, in Park Studio, three-nineteen A Street, Boston.
Jonathan Parks, ninety-Waltham LLC, member, three-nineteen A Street, Boston.
Is this second lodging house being converted to residential units? We've had today, is this still operating as a lodging house?
There is one occupant in the building.
What?
There's one occupant currently in the building. He's out on September first.
Okay. Do you have any questions on their plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are excellent.
All right.
Mr. Bazani, how large is the unit?
The units are fifty-two by...
Mr. Bazani, I could answer that question for you. The, the ground floor, lower duplex is twenty-three hundred square feet. The middle duplex is nineteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and the upper duplex is seventeen hundred square feet.
Sounds like nice units.
Thank you.
Very nice. Will this require exterior renovations, or is it all strictly interior?
Exterior renovation on the rear. On the front, it will be window restoration, new windows, and repointing of brick as needed.
And rear renovation will be what?
The rear renovation, the actual, the rear wall is actually collapsing right now, so we're proposing to rebuild it in alignment with the adjacent buildings.
But is it, is it a change, or is it just rebuilding an existing style?
The, I'm not sure if you could look, on the rear elevation, the left portion of it will be rebuilt in brick, and on the right side, it will be built in panel and large-format windows, all in accordance to the window opening areas.
And there's no new egress or access to additional?
We maintain all the egress connections with tie-ins to the adjacent properties on both sides.
All right, Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jordan D C from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support, and just commend them. They're always a pleasure to work with, and they're very proactive about the community process.
Excellent. Is this T card?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Elliot Lafer, Boston Groundwater Trust, speaking strictly on the groundwater issues. They have their approval letter from a water and sewer. I've seen their plans, and they should be all set.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Abbott, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linnahan, would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Council, Michelle Wu, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Anybody else on Wolfham Street? Okay. Is there a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant relief requested with the following provisos, B R A design review for the rear, and I'm going to put a proviso in that the brick is full brick. We've had too many instances where drawings have shown the brick, and then people are coming in with the brick piles.
No, thank you.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling twenty Trenton Street, Ward Two. This is B O A number thirty-six, four, forty-eight, eighty-one. This is a request to erect a second-level rear deck. Violation is Article sixty-two, Section eight, insufficient rear yard in a shallow lot. There is also a building code violation. This is number thirty, B O A number thirty-six, forty-eight, eighty-two, for the following. Section seven-oh-eight, C M R seven-oh-two, seven-oh-five-point-two, projection of exterior wall. Section seven-oh-five-point-two-point-one, type one and two construction projections from the wall. Section seven-oh-two-point-two-point-two, type three, four, and five construction projections. Section seven-oh-five-point-two-point-three, combustible projections. Your name and address for the record, please.
William McDonald, twenty-twenty Street, Southbound Mass., oh-two-one-two-nine.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the building code first, Mr. Bazani?
Yes. I am not fully cognizant as to why Doug Wan picked you up on that.
I believe, after we filed the two appeals, we were informed that one of them was unnecessary, and I would imagine that would be the one.
I'm going to make a motion, the building, building code relief requested, in fact, if two of them have gone away, it's de minimis. I'm going to make a motion to grant the building code relief requested.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And the rest of it, do you want to comment on the plans, or?
I mean, it's a very small bracket. I mean, what we're talking about is a thirteen-foot-nine-by-seven-foot-six deck.
Okay. Who wants to be heard on Trenton?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McKay, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held in the butters meeting for this last night. A few neighbors showed up, all in support of it. Arguably, the person that will be most directly affected is his neighbor directly next door, who's also completely in support, so we'd like to go on record in support of this.
Thank you. All right. Well, Judy?
Chairman, members of the board, do we have a seat down the cell on my team's office? He wishes to go on record in support, seeing the neighbors supported as well.
Thank you. If there's no one else, we'll take a motion?
Motion for approval, B R A design.
Second. All those in favor? Any others? Okay, you're all set, sir.
Thank you.
Calling forty-four, forty-six Lamson Street, Ward One. This is B Z C number thirty-three, six-twenty-three. This is a request to combine lots and erect three-family dwellings. Violation is Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking insufficient. Article fifty-four, Section nine, insufficient lot area and excessive F A R. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Linz, twelve-sixteen Benningson Street East, Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. As the secretary indicated, this is a proposal to combine two vacant lots in the Jeffries Point neighborhood, which would contain a total of twenty-eight hundred square feet. We would propose to erect a three-story, three-family dwelling, very consistent with the surrounding uses in the area. We did have an opportunity to present this multiple times to the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. We did receive an unusual twenty-one to nothing unanimous vote from that organization, and I believe that the butters as well have supported this, may have also submitted letters of support to the board. Happy to answer any questions on the proposal.
All right. Do you have any questions, Mr. Bazani?
No, drawings are adequate.
And you're not providing any parking?
There is no parking, which makes the vote of the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association unusual, but I think the trade-off through the chair was whether or not we want to preserve as much open space in the lot or try to jam free parking spaces into the, into the site. The neighborhood overwhelmingly supported keeping it as green space or open space on the lot.
Is this an L-shaped lot?
Nope.
No? No, two rectangular shaped lots.
Okay. Who wants to be heard on this? Come in.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Corinne Petralia, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Like the applicant stated, they did get overwhelming support at the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, do we have a seat down the cell on my team's office? He wishes to go on record in support as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to be heard on Lamson Street? We'll take a motion.
Motion for approval, B R A design.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling B Z C number thirty-three, six-fifty-three, ninety White Street, Ward One. This is a request to change legal occupancy from a two-family to a four-family dwelling and to renovate. Violations are Article nine, Section one, reconstruction, extension of non-conforming building, further enlargement of structures, results in insufficient rear yard setback and excessive F A R. Article fifty-three, Section eight, multifamily use is forbidden in a two-family district. Article fifty-three, Section nine, F A R excessive. Article fifty-three, Section twelve, rear yard insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-two, roof structure restrictions. Section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Section fifty-four, screening and buffering. And Article fifty-three, Section nine, dimensional regulations, number of stories has been exceeded. Your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Joyce, Story Law Office, fifty Franklin Street. With me, I have Mr. Georges, the manager of the entity, the owner of this property, Brian Parham, our architect. By way of background, this is a crime, problem property in Boston. The proposal is to rehab it, to make it consistent with the adjoining building, and also to affect the use. It's four units. It's been used from everything from a two-family, a three-family, a four-family, a rooming house, a boarding house, source of trouble in the community for many years. We met with the Eagle Hills Civic Association on June twenty-fifth, and we received their support. I passed that in. We've also got support from the director butters and fifteen other residents of the neighborhood, local area, that would like to see this building rehabbed and something.
What do you have in the building, say, trees and fours?
Trees and fours, ninety-two.
Six botanical building? Okay. All right, three questions.
Yes, could you supply the square footage for each of the units, please?
Unit one, eight-twenty-four, lower level, first floor, seven-hundred-and-twenty-one. Second floor, eight-hundred-and-eighty-three. Third floor, eight-hundred-and-six.
And are these one bedrooms, two bedrooms, what are they?
Two bedrooms.
All two bedrooms?
All two bedroom houses, yes.
And I ask, did not cite you for building code violation for second means of egress through bedroom?
But they have not.
All right. Who would like to be heard on this matter in favor? Corinne?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Corinne Petralia, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. They did meet with the Eagle Hills Civic Association and gain their support. There are a few direct abutters here today. I think one of them had to leave to go to work, but they're here also in support. This property has been kind of an issue in the neighborhood, and I think people are happy to see it renovated and rehabbed.
All right, thank you. Judy?
Do we have a seat down the cell on my team's office? He wishes to go on record in support as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Christine Murphy. I am a direct abutter. My house is attached to this, this, this building. I've lived there for twenty years, and it has been a really big problem. It is a blessing to have George come in and take care of this building. And four, four units is not a problem. I live in a four-unit building on that corner already, so that will be no problem.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to grant relief requested with B R A design review for exterior work, but also with a proviso that this board will not grant building code relief. So if you're required to work out your egress, you're going to have to do it in terms of design issue, and also you're aware that this building should be sprinkled, and I ask that you should require that.
It's going to be sprinkled.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have sprinkled.
Second, may I? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? You're all set, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any of the applicants scheduled for eleven-thirty requesting a withdrawal or deferral? Stefanov, the address?
Two, Doug Stefanov, ninety-three F Street, the address, two-sixty-six La Martine.
Calling two-sixty-six La Martine Street, Ward nineteen, B Z C number thirty-three, two-ninety-five. This is a request to erect a three-story building to six residential units with parking. Your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanov, ninety-three F Street. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to request a deferral, as through a community process, the building has changed and requires additional violations to be cited and advertised that couldn't be done in the timeframe.
All right, let's... All those in favor, deferral? All right. What date might we have?
So you were here in April. And you've made some progress, right?
Oh, yeah, we've had twelve community, yeah.
Okay, so the date is going to be December ninth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Okay. George?
George, the address?
Thirty Middle Street, Mr. Roger.
Calling B Z C number thirty-three, five, forty-four, thirty Middle Street, Ward seven. This is a request to erect a three-family dwelling. Your name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moransey, an attorney with the business address, four-sixteen West Borough Lane, South Boston. Now, Mr. Chairman, members, this is a matter where we had been meeting with the community. We have been trying to reach resolution on some issues of concern to a direct abutter and some other neighbors. We have reached what we hope will be a compromise here in terms of re-proposing that this is a two-family dwelling. Unfortunately, because of the, the hour at which this decision was made, there are no plans available at this time for the direct abutter to review complicating matters. My client actually was rushed to the hospital this morning after having an accident, and he was unavailable to meet with the abutter as we had planned. Consequently, we would request a deferral so that we continue to work with the abutter and other neighbors. Bring the motion for the deferral.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. And again, what date do we have? This Middle Street.
I just squeeze you in on September twenty-third at eleven-thirty.
Okay, thank you. Any other deferrals? Everyone else is going forward?
Calling B Z C number thirty-three, three-sixty-eight, seventy-four Ashford Street, Ward twenty-one. Is anybody here for Ashford Street? This is our, this is B Z C number thirty-three, three-sixty-eight, seventy-four Ashford Street, Ward twenty-one. This is a request to change the legal occupancy from a two-family to a three-family dwelling, creating a basement unit. Violations are, are, are you guys proceeding with your case today?
Yes.
Violation is Article nine, Section one, extension of non-conforming use, conforming
Violations are Article nine, section one, extension of non-conforming use, conforming structure. Article fifty-one, section eight, basement units are forbidden. Article fifty-one, section nine, additional lot area for, for each unit is insufficient, open space is insufficient, FAR is excessive. Also, Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, on record, for the record, my name is Attorney Jack P. Milgram. My office address is number one Billings Road, that's in Quincy, Massachusetts, oh-two-one-seven-one. To my left is the applicant, Dr. Zhang, who is the property owner at seventy-four Ashford Street, Boston.
All right, great.
Could, could I ask a, a question? Need clarification? Want to legalize the basement, is that correct?
That's the intention, that's correct.
The basement unit is existing, is that correct?
That's correct.
What is the floor-to-ceiling height? Drawing says seven foot four, which will not be allowed. Seven foot six for a multi-family, changing into a multi-family building. And also, the second means of egress out of the unit is through the utility room, which would not be allowed.
Why would you defer the last time?
I'm sorry?
Why would you defer the last time?
Because I was unavailable, I was out of state.
Okay, okay.
And some of these things can be dealt with. You could lower the floor, for instance, to achieve the seven-foot-six ceiling height required. You could rework your mechanical room, but on the basis of the drawings that are before us, this project has no merit.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Well, I don't know, because, I mean, physically, they could change it.
Who? In light of what we're gonna, we request at this time is that we, we withdraw the application without prejudice.
Okay.
We would give the right to come down.
Without prejudice.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll see you back in a minute.
Thank you.
Calling, BZC number thirty-three, five eighty-six, ten King Street, Ward sixteen. The applicant here for King Street. This is a request to extend living space into the basement. Violation is Article nine, section one, this is an extension of the non-conforming use. This is, um, three-family use in a two-family zone. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board. Clayton Turnbull, uh, in Jamaica Plain, thirty-two Woodland Road. Uh, respectfully asking you to, uh, grant our request. Uh, we purchased this, uh, three-family home about three years ago, and didn't realize that the prior owner had abandoned the application to, uh, just, uh, extend the living space in unit number one. We had, uh, met with the, uh, neighborhood, uh, and, uh, they were, I think the mayor's office would give you their own report on it, but they had no issue with it. This is not us trying to increase the amount of people that live there, people, uh...
What does the basement look like, the, the proposed extension of living space?
Well, uh, the, as differentiated from the previous case, there is a separate means of egress out. The basement is connected to a stair from unit one.
That's correct.
So, that is the correct exit. So, the only question comes about is, what is the floor-to-ceiling height?
The floor-to-ceiling height is seven feet, three inches.
And this now becomes a three-family?
It's still a, it was legally always a three-family.
Well, it's still legally a three-family.
No.
It was a, it was a two-family with an illegal unit in the basement.
No, no. This is a legal three-family, so we're just extending the living space that's in the basement. So, it's always been a legal three.
Again, you have exactly the same issue as the previous case, that ceiling heights required in multi-family dwellings have to be seven foot six. We don't have that. You can achieve it, and you could dig up the floor, there are a lot of things that you could do, but based on the drawings as presented, it will not proceed. However, as differentiated from the previous case, I'm gonna make a motion for deferral to allow you to come back with a proposal in terms of how you can correct that violation.
The height.
And there's one more question. How many bedrooms will be in that first unit? If, if it was extended to the basement?
Before bedrooms total.
Right, but it is a large house, which I did bring some, uh, photos also that you
can have. Uh, so upstairs, we have dining room, we have the traditional family rooms, so it's not trying to squeeze anybody in there.
No, it's just because the code has a certain number of...
Right. So, double-check and see how we can get the seven foot six.
Drop the floor, raise the ceiling. All those in favor of deferral?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We're looking at, um, December ninth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Um, calling, um, the following three cases. Thirty-one Hainsborough Street, Ward fourteen, BZC number thirty-three, two ninety-eight. Thirty-nine Hainsborough Street, Ward fourteen, BZC number thirty-three, two ninety-nine. Thirty-five Hainsborough Street, Ward fourteen, BZC number thirty-three, three hundred. The applicant has written to withdraw the application, so I'm gonna make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, calling, BZC, calling, BZC number thirty-three, um, two ninety-four, fifteen Rockmere Street, Ward thirteen. This is a request to erect two dormers and to extend living space into the attic. Violations are Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard insufficient, building height and FAR excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm John Minahan. My address is fifteen Rockmere Street. I'm the homeowner.
Carol Marsh. Um, I'm the architect. It's twenty-nine Lincoln Street, Hyde Park.
Molly O'Garell, I work for the architects, and my address is sixty Summer Street, number two, Somerville, Massachusetts.
And so, you're proposing to erect two dormers and extend to the attic, and this is a one-family dwelling?
That's right.
Okay. Um, what do the plans indicate, Mr. Chairman?
The drawings are adequate, plans are moving.
All right. Um, who'd like to be heard on Rockmere? Ward thirteen, uh, Alex.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alex Finelli, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record and support. They've met with, uh, both the planning committee and the general membership of the Columbia Savinale Civic Association, received their approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Amy Frigiletti, Boston City Councilor Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record, um, in support of this project.
Thank you.
Um, just have a couple of questions. Your building height is excessive, and so is your FAR. What's required, and what are you proposing?
What's, the building height is excessive in, um, the, uh, number of stories. So, what's required is two and a half stories. We're proposing three stories, building out the attic with the dormer space. Uh, the FAR is, uh, um, point five, and it's existing, non-conforming, at point five-eight. This brings it up to point eight-five.
Would you not increase in the height of the...
Correct. The ridge stays in place.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I think we're done with testimony. We could consider a motion.
Motion for approval, BIA Design View.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it sounds like you're all set.
Thank you.
Calling, twenty-seven Washburn, Washburn Street, Ward seven. This is BZC number thirty-three, five eighty-seven. This is a request to combine lots and erect a building to six residential units. Violations are Article sixty-five, section eight, multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, lot size for the additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Front yard, side yard, and rear yard is all insufficient. FAR, maximum building height, um, is excessive, and maximum building height requirements is excessive. It's three stories maximum that's allowed. Your name and address for the record, please.
David Mullin, fifty-one Fremont Street, Needham, Massachusetts.
James Christopher RCA, business address of four fifteen Napleton Ave., Dorchester, Mass.
James Baker, two thirty-seven Hill Avenue, Dorchester, Mass.
All right. Um, six families still, or have you conceded?
It's, uh, seven units, Mr. Chairman.
Seven?
Yes.
Um, you know what? It was advertised as a six-family. Um, everything, this is Washburn, right?
Yes.
Everything, um, the rejection letter talks about a six-family, and as does the advertising talks about it as a six-family.
Um, I mean, at the last meeting, it was discussed and agreed for a, a, a deferral that through conversations with the neighborhood, that rather than a six and a nine family, there's a sister project here, unrelated, uh, different owner than, than us, uh, it would be two, w- one would be seven, the other would be seven, and we deferred, and we submitted new plans based on that.
But you can read violation letter that states that it's a seven.
Wait, it doesn't create any new violations from the old letter. We, when we were in front of the board on the July hearing date, we were told it needed to be re-advertized. We thought it was just gonna be re-advertized.
And it's, the remaining footprints of the building does not change.
Was it re-advertized? You never had a discussion with us about re-advertising. This was preferred for community process and discussion. There was a letter on record to McCormick Civic Association as well, saying, uh, that there needs to be community process.
Um, with regard to the community process, actually, that letter was sent yesterday. We've had six community meetings. We've met with the, the Civic Association, direct abutters, and we have complete consensus with the community on this, on this project. The issue with the Civic Association is they don't meet during the summertime, and we could not have, we could not have a formal vote. We had a final abutters meeting last Thursday, where there was complete consensus on that, um, on, on all the issues of the project. The, the pictures that you're looking at there, uh, Mr. Fortune, are, are, uh, that last picture is one project that was approved by the board on the corner of Boston in Washburn Street. It's very similar in terms of scale and density and so forth.
All right. It sounds, it sounds fine. The only problem we have is that, uh, we're presented, if you went back to ISD after your deferral and presented new plans for a different building, basically another unit, whether it triggered new violations or not, it still need to public, I think, if I'm not correct, correct me, please, but needed new public advertising because you're applying to build look-for-relief or something different than a six-family. If it's more, if you come here as I somewhat adjusted, you know, six, and you're sticking with six, or you've given up, and, you know, like you said, seven, I think, does this need to be re-advertized, or can we proceed?
And, um, I mean, you have, your plans show seven parking spaces. Um, the, what zone is this? This is three of D two thousand. What's the parking requirement?
I, I believe it's less than one. I mean, we have adequate parking.
Because, and where did you squeeze in that, that seventh unit?
That was part of the community process. We started meeting with the community in February.
No, from sixty-seven, where is that?
Basically, the original design is going to be a headhouse with roof decks and, for the third floor, and, and instead of using it as a headhouse, we converted to a seventh unit.
So, did you have to increase the, the, the size of that headhouse, the quote headhouse?
No, we, it basically stayed the same size.
And how big is that unit?
It's, it's, um, fifteen hundred square feet.
Should have been adequate size.
Well, I'd like to proceed, but the rules never get in my way. Well, it's up to me. I proceed. It sounds like they've done more than adequate community work, and the community went on vacation. Where's the mayor's office, Senator Eric? What's your, what is your sense of things? Do you know where we are?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we'd like to go on record and support. We are aware of the outstanding issue that the Civic Association hasn't actually voted on this proposal yet, but through this proponent's community process, they have actually, um, addressed all the issues. That, and also with the new addition today, that I want to add a proviso that any entrance and exit through the property for the parking lot would have to go back through BTD for approval. Um, that's one issue the community is a little concerned with, that when people move into the building, they can just kind of flip it around, and they worked hard to get it from entering Ross and exit Washburn.
Okay, all right. Are you people here to speak on this matter? Washburn?
Yes.
Okay, name and address, please.
Uh, William Tribuco, twenty-eight Rosson Street, Dorchester. Good afternoon. Um, I'm an immediate abutter to both the properties that are gonna be developed here, to twenty-seven, uh, Washburn and twenty Rosson. Um, I'm the one who actually asked for the first affirmative, as part, I'm a member of my Civic Association, and it was over the concerns of, uh, parking and how the traffic flow would work. Uh, it wasn't finalized yet, and in writing, which I, you know, I needed in order to have the confirmation, the insurance, assurance that our quality of life wouldn't be so detrimentally affected in perpetuity. Um, I had lengthy discussions with James Baker and the other co-developer, Doug George, and we came to an agreement, a compromise that worked for myself and other abutters on Rosson Street. Um, I believe it works for the abutters on Washburn, um, without, you know, naming particular names, I believe it does. I didn't hear any opposition to it. Um, I had asked for, uh, actual mechanical controls for the traffic that would come in on Washburn and leave on Rosson Street, car access, which would probably cost the developers several thousands of dollars additional to put in place, and I got that, uh, I got that assurance in writing, and, uh, that assuaded all my fears and concerns about the parking. Uh, so, in a nutshell, as an immediate abutter, within thirty, forty feet of the development, I fully support it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, um, my name is Desmond Rowan. I am an executive board member for the McCormick Civic Group, where this, uh, development lies in its boundaries. I live on Eight Howell Street. So, I just wanted to reiterate, um, though I commend James, uh, for his community process, having met with the community, uh, five times, um, I want to reiterate that at the June meeting, he, the plans were not prepared well, and there was a deferral made, um, and we owe it to our membership and the residents of, uh, North Dorchester to, um, have a formal vote on this proposal. Uh, the second issue is that this development is being developed with a, um, a budding parcel at twenty Rosson Street by Doug George, and they are, even though they purchased the property together, for some reason, they are developing, developing them and presenting them separately. So, we think that they are very dependent on each other since the, since they will be easements for parking and so forth, and so, um, that was the justice of the deferral back in June, and we, we owe it again to our membership to have them come back in September and get a formal vote. Thank you.
Can I make one comment? Why don't you wait one minute? It's another person, why don't you want to speak? Name and address, please.
Hi, Janice Gary, seventeen Washburn Street. I'm an abutter to this project, twenty-seven Washburn. Um, I was present to the, at the community meetings, including the one this past Thursday. There were some concerns in regard, in the neighborhood in regards to trees, um, and behind the lot, and, um, or on the lot that are behind other abutting houses, and, um, deck placements, so with an understanding that there were changes to the plans and commitments to keep those trees in support of this project.
All right, thank you.
The only point I want to make is that, based on what's in front of you today, there are no easements required for this project. None whatsoever.
Now, I'm thinking that what we can do is, um, make a motion, and I'm gonna make a motion for approval of six units, because as you go through the construction, that's all, you have the time to come in to legalize that seventh unit, just so that everything, for the, for the record is clear.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And everything.
Thank you. I'm gonna second that motion. All those in favor?
And that's, and that's with Design View.
Thank you so much. What is the other building coming to, oh, sorry, is it coming?
It's, it's filed with the, uh, ISD, and it's waiting for a date.
We're waiting for a date, Mr. ...
Could I ask a question? If project coming forward is adjacent to this and in same ownership, why should this be viewed as a clever way of not going through, adequately, this small project review?
Um, it's not same ownership. It's gonna be totally different ownership.
Okay. And it's not gonna drip back after?
No.
So, what is Doug George's relationship to this project?
Um, what happened was is we, we jointly bid on a real estate so that we could buy... What happened was is we, we jointly bid on a real estate so that we could buy it and then he's taking the lots on Washburn Street, I'm taking the, excuse me, on Rossin, I'm taking the lots on Washburn separate. I've never done any developments with Doug George and never had a partner.
You bought it jointly?
Mm-hmm.
And had you sold it back to each other jointly? That is, so that you no longer have a piece of his and he no longer has a piece of yours?
Yes.
That's correct. Rossin Street LLC is the owner of this particular matter in front of you.
Okay, I mean, look, one of the problems with LLCs is that they're invisible in terms of what the ownership is. And I, we've had issues here before where in order to avoid an Article 80 process, projects that can split, we're sensitive to that. I'm relying on your certification as a court counselor or a member of the court to verify that this is not in joint ownership with the other project in any way.
There are no members of the LLC, Rossin Street LLC. Mr. George is not a party to this LLC.
Well, I just use that as a name. I don't have to know.
He's not part of the ownership.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling BZC number 33, 356, 39 A Street, Ward 6. This is a request to rectify story building for 25 residential units and parking for 16 vehicles, side decks, roof decks, and to renovate. Violations are Article 13, Section 4, dwellings in non-residential zoning district, Article 14, Section 2, additional lot area required, lot area for the additional dwelling unit is insufficient, Article 15, Section 1, FAR excessive, Article 17, Section 1, usable open space insufficient, Article 18, Section 1, front yard insufficient, Article 19, Section 1, side yard insufficient, Article 20, Section 1, rear yard insufficient, Article 23, Section 1, off-street parking insufficient, Article 16, Section 1, height is excessive, that is, height is excessive, it's over two and a half stories maximum allowed and 35 feet. Your name and address for the record, please.
Tim Johnson, architect, 190 Old Colony Avenue, Boston.
George Maransing, project attorney, 416 West Broadway, South Boston, Massachusetts.
Has this been through Article 80?
Sorry, ma'am?
Has this been through Article 80?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it has.
Yes, ma'am. You have any questions you want answered after their, with the plans you've reviewed, Mr. Kazati?
No, drawing through adequate.
Okay. Who wants to be heard on this matter? Eric?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record and support. This project has been through an extensive community process and actually was held up in the BRA for a month or two while, while we worked over the finer points, and one of those finer points was widening the sidewalks to eight feet, a good public amendment for the residents of South Boston. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chris and I, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, echoing the sentiments of the mayor's office, would also like to go on record and support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council, Michael Flaherty. Like to go on record and support.
Harry?
My name is Harry Collins. I'm representing the immediate abutter to the property, Michael and Millie in DeSano. They're requesting a deferral. They've attempted to meet with the developer. They've been immediate abutter for 16 years and they did just get plans a few days ago, but there are some issue, outstanding issues that they would like an opportunity to iron out. And originally, they thought that this hearing was going to be in October and they're asking for a deferral till October.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we reached out to the abudders architect on two occasions, sending them drawings. Never heard a response back. My clients have had the communication lines open.
We're hearing the case.
I have a question. Looking at your handout, what, can you tell us just what the unit sizes are, what the bedroom is, what the bedroom count is? And I noticed that you say you're providing three affordable units. Are they all the 469 square foot studio?
No, ma'am. There are 23 units total, three three-bedroom, 16 two-bedroom, one one-bedroom and three studios. Of the 23, three are affordable, two are studios and one is a two-bedroom.
Okay, and what's the unit, the unit sizes?
Well, the studios are around 500 plus or minus square feet. One bedrooms, 850, the two bedrooms around 1150, the three bedrooms around 1450.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Brown, you want to?
Hi, D'Artagnan Brown, architect for 33 A Street. Tim, we did receive your drawings. Our clients have tried to set up meetings so that we could have a design session together to allow us to work through some of the nuances of having two tall buildings next to each other, namely set about location of foundations, how that's coordinated. There's numerous windows along the party wall that's adjacent to our building that we'd like the opportunity to sit down and figure out how those lay out with their units versus our units, which we have not been afforded that.
Okay. Well, we would like the BRA to, you know, when there's contiguous or adjacent properties or large-scale development involving a few big buildings, we would love them to look at it as a larger package so that we don't do things piecemeal, but that's not where we're at today, and we've already heard the merits. You've already been deferred once. You know, I can't see how we can delay this because out of good community building process, there possibly should have been a more comprehensive review, but that's too late. We're here.
They were in schematic design while we were finish, finishing our preliminary design, but during design review?
No, that's a problem when, when things come and when things get applied, I understand.
During BRA design review, we have no problem sitting down with them and looking at window locations.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval with continued BRA design review.
Okay, wonderful. And are the abudders, Mr. Collins, are your abudders represented by Mr. Brown? Is it the same people or is that?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
And just to clarify that it's 23 units and not 25.
Okay.
23 units, yes.
Is there a second on that? All those in favor? Aye. And opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Calling BZC number 33, 509, 371 to 391, Dorchester Ave., Ward 6. Anybody here for Dorchester Ave., Ward 6?
You know what?
Do you know anything about it?
Yes, this is, um...
This is to brewery, fermenting craft beer.
Yes, how you doing? Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office. Can I request a deferral for this, this case, if you remember from a few months back? The only reason it got deferred in the first place is because there was a language in the refusal letter. And my concern is that the proponent might have lost his way, if you will. It was pretty much a no-brainer. I just kind of want to, would like to follow up with them and maybe give them a little more time.
Sure, it's going to take a lot of time now to get him back here because of American case law.
That's fair. Fair enough.
Make a motion for a deferral.
Second. All those in favor?
All right. Eric, since the applicant's not here, that means you'll have to let him know what a new date is.
Hold on.
We'll squeeze it on November 18th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Calling BZC number 33, 575, 213 Harrison Ave., Ward 3. This is a request to change legal occupancy from three residential units to five residential units. Erect one and a half story addition to the building and create one retail space in the basement. Violations are Article 43, Section 19, the residential conversion is conditional, retail in the basement is forbidden, Article 43, Section 6, FAR is excessive, Article 43, Section 23, 1, off-street parking is insufficient, and Article 32, Section 9, G-COD. There is also a building code violation, number 5414. This is in reference to Section 504.2, building height, automatic sprinkler system increase, section, section referring to exceptions. This is group buildings or portions of buildings classified as I-2. Section 1009.4, stair treads and risers. Section 1009.4.2, rise ahead and trend depth. Section 1026, exterior exit ramp and stairways. Section 1027.3, exit discharge location. Your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Coleman, on behalf of the applicant, 128 Lincoln Street, Boston. Jim Chen, representing my dad, Bob Chen, 15 Foulless Sheet, Quincy.
Building code? You want to address that, Mr. Kazati? Or have it addressed?
Please state the violation and the mitigation proposed for the violation.
The, they purchased the property at the end of 2013, I think, knowing that the property was in rough shape. It's going to be a complete rehab of the building is what's intended. All of these matters, including the sprinkling of the building, everything will be brought up to code at the time that work's done.
I want to make a motion therefore, you're going to, by code, you have to.
Of course.
So make a motion to deny the building code rule.
Second.
Which forces you to bring it up to building code.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, what do you want to hear about this? How many units is it?
What is this? It's 213 Harrison Ave. What is the proposal? Three to five. What are the sizes of the units proposed?
950, approximately 950 square feet.
So each unit is 950, they're all one bedrooms?
One bedroom. Mr. Chairman, there's, there's going to be a slight change to the, based on what we heard from the neighborhood when this initial application was made. It was going to be four, five units. There's actually only going to be four residential units as a result of the extensive meetings that we had. The building will actually, this is a good representation. It'll look exactly like that.
Which one?
It meets this one here. With the white windows.
You're adding four then?
Adding one floor. Or raising the existing four floors.
What's under, what's under the piece of paper?
Well, that was, that was the initial proposal. That was the initial proposal. That was the initial proposal. So, so after that, they kind of...
So you're matching, okay? And what's the commercial space proposed in the basement?
It's actually a retail, it's not retail, it's an office space for, for Jim's father's construction company. It's where his office will be. Owner occupied.
Is the size of the units, it said 950, was that any different under the four or five-story plan or is it the same?
Same. Footprint of building is the same.
So, okay.
Yeah, we're just raising the...
It's not the off one floor.
No, one floor, yeah.
Another question is, how can you deal with the secondary means of egress? But that's for, since we denied it, it's just...
There will be a new metal stair at the back of the building.
Can I, enable, you want to record on this? Danny, I'm going to miss a laugh, I'll go first.
I'll have for both and groundwater trust, speaking strictly on groundwater issues. We don't have a letter from water and sewer. I do have a report that an engineer put together for them. It lays out a recharge system that is, is undimensioned and unclear that it meets the, the code requirements. Does note that the building is probably going to require underpinning because it has deteriorated wood pilings. So obviously, this is an important issue for them to begin with, but we don't have the information yet to, to go when they commit to doing it, but there's, there's no information that lets us know that they are for sure going to meet the requirement.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Danny Chang, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record and support. The abudders are also in support of the proposed application with the office space in the basement. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chris and I, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, we'd like to go on record and support with the concessions made and the abutter support. The council is happy with that.
Very good. Who else wants to be, who else came to speak on this matter? I'm going to ask this question before you get started. Who else came to speak on this matter? Just you? Just, yeah, it doesn't matter which mic you take. So you're the only person who's giving testimony on this, right?
I don't know if any of the abutter owners want to say something?
I need to know. Who wants to be heard on this matter?
Put your hands up, please.
Yeah, just put your hands up if you want to speak. Okay, so there's one, two, three, four people and you. Okay, that's all, that's all we're going to take, okay?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Karen Chen. I'm with the Chinese Progressive Association. We're a community-based organization in Chinatown, and we have been seeing alarming number of eviction cases in Chinatown and displacement. We are actually really concerned about the issue of affordability in Chinatown. We were here on July 22nd because at that time, the remaining family with a disabled father was still living in that apart, in that building. Fortunately, they were able to find suitable housing. They moved out in the beginning of August. But actually, this building prior to the current ownership and the request for zoning change, it was occupied by low-income families, and we asked that the owners would keep one of the units affordable to low-income families. And we know that other cities like New York, they have policy known as inclusionary preservation in which city government secure de-restricted affordable units when private properties undergo veneration or change hands with zoning, you know, approval of property tax abatement as a tool to secure an agreement. So we also have a letter from the Master Plan Implementation Committee and also signatures from, you know, residents of Chinatown and nearby in, you know, asking the city and the zoning board to, you know, support, you know, to keep some of the units affordable. So, you know, we asked that the zoning board to make approval, any zoning change to, to Harrison contingent through such agreement, and we asked that the zoning board to consider socioeconomic impacts when reviewing, you know, project. So, thank you. And I have written testimony. I don't know who I'm supposed to submit to.
First over here. Who's next? Your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Mahana, and I'm an abutter to this project, and I approve it.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
My name is Jeannie Chu, and my mother, Cam Wong, lives exactly next door at 215 Harrison Avenue, and we approve of this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lillian Chin. I'm one of three trustees for the building on the next door, the 211 Harrison Avenue, which goes around the corner to 3941 Oak Street. Now, we had concerns about raising the chimney and how it affects the roof of the 39 store, and we also had concerns about the second egress on the fire escapes, but I think we've been able to work some of these issues out, and I think we can continue to negotiate and work out some of the little kinks here and there, but in general, I would support this.
All right, thank you for coming in.
I am Dorothy Pond. I am one of the trustees of 211 Harrison, which abuts 213, and I just want to be reassured that when the two walls are abutted together, that ice and thawing and freezing in the wintertime, how will be, I want to be reassured that that will be prevented.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. All right, that was it for testimony? Everyone's all set? Is anyone who's opposed to this who wanted to be heard? So everyone's pretty much in favor with some concerns and conditions, affordability and groundwater and ice? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Going to make a motion for approval with BRA design review and no building, no code relief, even though we've denied it, just so that you know that there'll be no code relief.
Okay.
And those address the violations that have been identified by the zoning code.
Second.
Okay. Can we make a, to make a dependent on G-COD?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, until we get the G-COD letter... Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, until we get the G-Cod, uh, letter, then we will hold signature.
All right. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Are there any opposed to it? Okay.
Thank you.
You heard the neighbors' concerns, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Calling BZC number 33451, 463 New Rossford Ave, Ward 2. This is a request to demolish the existing structure and erect a building for 18 residential units and 26 parking spaces. Violation from Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 62, Section 14, FAR excessive, building height is excessive and rear yard is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Bruce Daniel, 80 Loring Road, Weston, Mass.
John French, Shepparton French Architects, 5 Monument Square, Charleston.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this proposal, uh, as stated, is to, uh, raise the existing structure that is on the site and replace it. The original application was for 18 units. Uh, as a result of, of, uh, extensive neighborhood input into this project, we have reduced the number of units from 18 to 15. Uh, the existing structure is about 41 feet tall, uh, has a legal use at the moment of 10 residential units and two commercial units with eight parking spaces. Uh, our proposal as amended, uh, is to provide 15, uh, residential units with 33 parking spaces and, uh, two affordable units. Uh, as I said, this has gone through a very extensive neighborhood process, uh, and...
Bruce Daniel right there, so that removes your parking violation. Uh, does your FAR building height change and I'm assuming your rear, your, it would still say the same?
Right. So, yes, the building height, uh, the, our proposed building is lower than the existing building now, but we still exceed the 35 feet, uh, uh, in the code. Um, and, uh, the FAR has been reduced from our original proposal from, the existing building is 2.44. Uh, we had originally proposed 2.97 and we're now, uh, down to about 2.7 in the FAR.
And what does the, the code require?
Uh, 2.0.
2.2?
Zero.
Okay, 2.0, okay.
Great. Any questions from, uh, the architects? Anyone hear anything?
I'm on your end.
Very good. Would anyone like to be heard on this matter in favor? Tom?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McKay, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. As the proponent mentioned, they've been through an extensive community process with this project. Um, they've worked with the neighbors to address all the issues that came up. Uh, at the last community meeting that we had, when they presented, uh, their proposal to add additional parking, that brings it up to 33, um, there was a general consensus that people could support that. So, uh, Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support.
Here is the City Council, Seala Martinez, we wish to go on record in support. It's been through a long community process and the community did come together and support.
Excellent. Uh, Paul?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the Office of City Council, Michael Flaherty, they'd like to go on record in support.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my upper representative, Carver Tresini, would like to be in favor of this project.
All right. Anyone else to be heard in favor or opposition to Rutherford? Ready for the motion?
Motion for approval, BRA Design Review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Well, we have to take a extended recess because the next cases are legally scheduled for 1 o'clock and we can't hear them until then. And we can't even ask if there's any withdrawals until then, so we adjourn until 1 o'clock. All right, now, good afternoon, we're going to start with the 1 o'clock hearings and finish with the 1 o'clock hearings. So...
Any of the applicants scheduled for 1 o'clock requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? Anybody requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? Come forward, please. The address, come sit at the table and just, just tell me what your address is. Are you together? Okay, what's the address?
643 High Park Avenue, Rosenger, Mass.
Okay, hold on. Calling 643 High Park Ave, Ward 18. This is BOA number 363573. This is a request to erect a rear addition and dormers. Your name and address for the record, please.
Is Kennedy Santana, 643 High Park Avenue, Rosenger, Massachusetts.
Are you requesting deferral or, what are you requesting?
Um, the, the, we need more time because the architect is working on the project. It's not ready.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take you at a later date. Uh, motion for deferral?
Motion for deferral.
All those in favor?
Uh, we're going to, going to see you back again on December 16th, okay, at 12:30. Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody, any other applicants requesting a withdrawal or deferral of their cases? No? Okay. Calling 8 Libby Street, Ward 20. This is a request, this is BOA number 363964. This is a request to erect a single-family dwelling.
Well, don't put the boards up there, okay? Don't put them up there. If you want to put them up, put them up over there, but, uh, not, not where we can't see the, the room.
Um, violations are Article 56, Section 8, lot area, lot width and lot frontage are all insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Brian Ward and I represent Deborah Dunne. Uh, my office is at 333 Victory Road, Marina Bay, Quincy.
Yes.
Okay, what are we considering? Uh, new single-family in a single-family neighborhood?
That's correct.
And, uh, we got a few dimensional violations. The neighborhood like what you're doing or not?
Um, my understanding is the neighborhood is in opposition to the, uh, proposed relief.
Okay. Who wants to be heard on this? Let's, let's get the facts out there right away. Uh, Alan? Chris? Chris, I'm sorry, my, my reading glasses on.
Good morning, sir, good afternoon, Chair members of the board. Chris Ross from Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record of opposition. Many of the neighbors are opposed, um, due to the small size of the lot and, uh, tight parking on the street. They think it's a, a hazard. It's a tight turn for a fire truck to make already, um, so opposition, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Phil McGregor with the City Council, Matt O'Malley. The council would also like to go on record in, uh, in opposition. Um, they had, they did go in front of West Roxbury Zoning and, uh, they were, uh, denied as well there and, um, many of the neighbors have reached out to us in opposition as well.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the Office of City Council, Michael Flaherty. Uh, just due to the, uh, community opposition, uh, the council at this time is in opposition.
Okay, thanks.
I'm an abutter and I'm...
Give me one second, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of the City Council, Michelle Wu, would like to also go on record in opposition.
All right, thank you.
I'm an abutter and I'm in opposition. The lot is only 4,200 square feet. West Roxbury zoning board requires 6,000 square feet. There's also an underground stream at the back of the property. There's no parking. We can't get fire trucks in the street. They've had to park on the end street and walk in when we've had problems on occasion. Um, and quite frankly, it's a nice little piece of green space. It's clean, there's not, no needles or trash or anything in there, but it is a beautiful piece of green space on the street. Gives us a little room to breathe.
May we have your name, please? I'm glad it helps the neighborhood breathe. Who else wants to be heard on this? Anyone else? All right, come forward, your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Robert Starr, live at 10 Shepparton Avenue in West Roxbury. I live in the neighborhood. Uh, as you know, Article 56 promotes things, uh, promotes the preservation and maintenance and the creation of open spaces. Essentially, we have open spaces here. They seek to close off and prevent access to from animals. I understand there were some, some rabbits and some animals that were there, some turkeys slowly once in a while. Uh, we're trying to protect the environment and we're clearly tearing out the...
Let me just get this right, though. It's, it's private property, right?
It is private property, yes.
All right, all right, okay.
It is private property, but it has been open space forever.
Squirrels aren't paying the taxes, right?
I'm sorry?
Squirrels aren't paying the taxes, right?
Uh, no, they're not, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're all set.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard?
Uh, just a question for the applicant. This is a pre-existing lot, right?
That's correct.
Oh, I guess we should just wait for a minute.
My name is Marion O'Brien and I'm a director abutter to the property in question. And I feel that, you know, it took a lot, lot of years to get the zoning law into place and I think that what's being proposed is, um, it's just completely opposite of what the zoning law is required. So I'm, I'm opposed to the building of the single-family house.
Thank you very much. Anyone else before we turn it back to the applicant? Are you the last person who wants to speak or is there anyone else? I'm just trying to get a sense of anyone else. I'm not, okay? Go ahead, name and address.
Hi, my name is Dennis Sullivan. I live at 11 Libby Street, right across the street from the lot. I'm opposed, strongly opposed. Uh, this has already been denied twice in the past 10 years. It's 2,000 feet too small. Our street is extremely crowded, very densely populated and fire engines can't make it down the street now. We had an incident with my daughter. We had to call, she had an anaphylactic reaction to a cashew. Fire engines can't make it around the corner with all the cars on the corners. You put another house there and it'll be worse.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to explain? You know, we, historically, you know, this is the way it is on undersized lots in West Roxbury and we, we appreciate that they do have a standard at trying to hold to with the new zoning, 6,000 suite. We completely empathize with their, their situation regardless of green space or...
Can you please put it on the record because your violations are lot area, lot width and lot, lot frontage? And I just want to find out whether this has been a pre-existing lot and how long this lot has been in this shape?
This lot, um, is, as you can see from the handout that we provided for the board, this lot was created pursuant to a, uh, plan of house lots which dates back to 1873. Um, the dimensions of the lot, um, that, as it currently stands, um, have not changed. The, uh, the lot, uh, upon which we seek to develop, um, and, and build the single-family home, um, as you can see by the, uh, the rendering as well as the plans, it's a modest-sized single-family home. Um, the home would comply with all setbacks relative to side yard, uh, lot, side yard, front yard and, uh, as well as the rear yard. Uh, in fact, the lot is larger, um, than many of the lots in the neighborhood as it exists. And the relief that we seek from the board in, is such that it is the absolute minimum that the board could grant in order for the lot to be used for its intended purpose. And again, if you take a look at the, uh, the plan which was provided, uh, it's entitled "Plan of House Lots." So this is a lot which was intended to be used for a single-family home. It's zoned in a single-family residence and that's exactly what we're looking to put in. The house, um...
The zoning did change, though, so...
And, and that's correct. And what we would, we would suggest is, uh, the relief sought is the bare minimum, uh, to use the lot as the lot would be intended to be used.
And you're providing off-street parking?
That's correct. Off-street parking will be provided. There is a garage as well as a driveway, um, in, uh, at the property. Um, and again, it all complies, um, with, uh, all required setbacks, so it's for that reason, um, I know, I understand the concerns of many of the abutters and the, uh, and the neighbors. However, uh, the parking issue would be taken care of pursuant to the plans and I think if you take a look at the plans as well as the rendering, um, it's, the house is the same, relatively the same size, shape and, um, height as many of the homes in the neighborhood. It would certainly conform with the character of the neighborhood and I think it's, um, the work of Mr. Roach, the, my architect who was here with me today. I think he did a great job in, uh, drawing up and planning a home that would really fit into the neighborhood and would really promote the, uh, the objectives and the purposes of the West Roxbury zoning code. That being, being able to provide housing that is, uh, that is not overly dense, um, and it would, uh, in an area that could certainly accommodate it. And again, due to the setbacks, we believe it certainly could accommodate that. The off-street parking would alleviate any of the concerns you've heard about the turn radius. Um, and again, that's the reasons why, uh, the project has been, um, developed and proposed the way that it has.
All right, hasn't there been a house on this lot?
There is, there has never been a house on the lot. There are houses in all of the lots in the neighborhood. This is the sole vacant lot in the neighborhood, really.
Okay, but from what I can see, it seems like the other lotlands that the houses are on are similar at that particular time when this was, was made up.
I'm going to address. Uh, yes, Mr. Fortune. Um, there are many non-conforming loose, uh, many non-conforming uses on the street where, that don't conform to current zoning. Um, and we worked, I worked very hard with the building department to, to take a look at how, um, how to work with, with what we had. It's a very narrow lot, there's a, there's a hardship associated with that. And I would suggest that, um, the, the building that, uh, that we're proposing to put up is, is very similar in many ways in terms of scale, in terms of density and, uh, certainly it meets every requirement of the but-for, of the, of the zoning code but-for the fact that it was an existing non-conforming use that, um, that again, this particular lot was a little bit narrow and we worked very, very hard with the building department to, um, to come up with what we did.
All right, I think we have a good picture of things. Any other questions? If not, I'd like to move this forward or move it out.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion to grant the relief requested. Relief being requested is absolutely minimal. Uh, it conforms to the dimensional setbacks that are required and, uh...
Are we, are we going to have a chance if they make some decision that's not, that's against the precedent that's already been set? I mean, it was denied twice. I just want to know if we get another chance because it seems like they're going to grant it.
There is discussion going on here.
Will we have a chance to do it?
No.
Okay, because...
You, you put yourself on the record earlier.
I, I know, but I just want to make, you kind of cut me off. You understand it's been denied twice.
Yeah, well, we're, we're voting right now.
Okay, and the WRNC, okay, they, they, they denied it.
You need to let us know.
It's a third too small, a third too small. Not 100 feet too small, 2,000 feet, that's all.
Mr. Bizani?
Thank you.
My, my motion stands with, uh, BRA Design Review.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed? So, the chair's going to vote with the opposition. I need to be the tiebreaker when there's not five votes. I'm going to vote opposed to the motion, so the motion fails to carry, therefore the relief request has been denied.
Just a clarification of the vote. Do you have the last, you have the last?
Mark, what kind of leader voted against the motion? Therefore, I need, the chair needs to vote, uh, voting with them, so... Okay. Motion failed. Right. Okay, sorry, gentlemen. Thank you.
Calling 6 to 8 Cheshire Street, Ward 19. This is BOA number 363117. This is a request to erect a two-family dwelling. Violation is Article 55, Section 9, insufficient left side yard. Your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Servo, BBS Construction.
Good afternoon, Stuart Schreier, representing the owner.
Hey, we're closing the porch, is that right?
No, no, this is a... No, no, this is a...
Oh, Cheshyer, oh, sorry.
This picture coming around, two pictures that should show you what happened. A mistake was made during the construction of a house. This is a two-family house that my client previously got permission to build. There was strong support from the neighborhood. Due to a misunderstanding between the surveyor and my client, a mistake was made in the construction of the house. The house was supposed to be built 10 feet from the left lot line. And it was built 10 feet from the left lot line. Unfortunately, the neighbor's house encroaches a foot over the lot. And my client should have realized that and should have moved the house over a foot further so he would be 10 feet from the neighbor's house. He is 10 feet from the lot line, which is what the code calls for, but he's not 10 feet from the neighbor's house, which is encroaching onto his land. It was an honest mistake because he had the extra room on the other side. He could have moved the house over. He needs 10 feet on the right side of the house, and he has 12.7. So the error was just not noted. There was a long time during the development process, the surveyor had originally gone out and noted the house was over the lot line, but then, when it came time to site the house, he had just forgotten about it. It was a...
But if, since the zoning requires 10 feet from the lot line, you meet the 10 feet from the lot line, you are legitimately meeting the requirements of the zoning code?
Yes, but the way the building inspector interprets it, he thinks we have to be 10 feet from the house next door. There's a footnote in the code that's a little bit ambiguous as to exactly what you're supposed to do. The footnote actually says you have to be 10 feet from the neighbor's house on their lot. But if the neighbor's house is on your lot, you still have to be 10 feet from the neighbor's house. Because it's open to a question, the plans examiner rightfully sent it to you because this is the process that we have to go through to solve the problem. The plans examiner might have been able to on his own say, "It's okay, but let's get it right, let's come here..."
... etc.
Yeah, no, let's get it right so that future owners don't have problems. A mistake was made between the surveyor miscommunication and the builder, and unfortunately, it happens. Now, the good parts of this, if anything can be said about making a mistake, is the house next door is only a one-story house, so you don't have the mass and bulk of being very close to a three-story house. The house next door is brick, so for fire resistance, there's a solid brick house next to it. And the neighbor, who is the one that's encroaching and is the one whose house is within the 10 feet, is in support of this additional request here at the board.
May I just make a motion to the board?
Second, you're the second. Second, you're the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any requests?
Thank you so much.
Calling 17 Buckingham Street, Ward 18. This is BOA number 363165. A request to enclose a porch. Violation is Article 69, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Elke Blaskus, 17 Buckingham Street, High Park, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. Have you seen the proposal to build a closure?
Yes, I have, Mr. Chairman.
Is it built already?
Is it attractive?
Did you build it already?
No, there was, when I bought it, when I bought the house in January, it was built. I got the pro-plan, they gave me, and I got the pictures.
So it is already built?
Yeah, a long time ago.
Then why are you here?
Because he has a violation for, the violation is for enclosing, enclosing the porch.
David, will you help us out here a little?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David McNulty, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. The issue the Mayor's Office has with this enclosure is that the porch, whether the porch was there when he bought it or not, shouldn't be there, shouldn't be used as living space. We were the ones that called ISD initially on behest of the neighbors. Our issue is that it's an undersized lot, granted, and the neighborhood is full of undersized lots, but this is, pushing living space onto the property line is exasperating in an already tough situation. All the neighbors we spoke to are against it. Would like to be recorded in opposition.
All right, very helpful. Thank you, Lee.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Lee Blazi, City Councilor to McCarthy's office. The council is also in opposition. Although it's true that a porch was built without permits by the previous owner, the applicant attempted to create additional living spaces, also without permits. He was issued stop-work orders. There were two existing open violations from inspectional services, which I have here. I also have a letter and petition from the neighborhood. There were structural concerns, safety concerns, and it's right on the neighbor's lot line.
Okay. Henry?
I'm sorry, is it right on the neighbor's lot line? Is that what you said?
Very, very close. I don't know what the actual dimension is, but I know it's, you can see in the petition she submitted a picture of before and a picture after. Also, if you, if you look at what this looks like, there's no way. It's a lattice work-covered box. So I don't...
Henry?
Chair, members of the board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of the City Councilor, Michelle Wolf, would also like to go on record in opposition.
Thank you. The building is four feet away from the lot lane. The lattice, the lattice work, the lattice work was put up by the previous owner. And where they say, where they say structural concerns, I've been in there. I'm, the structure is built with, it has two-by-eight rafters, and the walls are four-by-four, pressure-treated posts placed at eight feet, eight feet apart.
It's structurally sound, but it can be removed, right?
Yeah, it can be removed, yeah.
It's not a foundation or a...
It has, it has...
Chairman, I can make this motion for denial. I'd like also the supervisor to have ISD go out there and remove it.
All right, thank you.
Remove the lot.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed to it? I'm sorry, your application's been denied.
So we can keep it like a screen porch like I was?
Oh, I don't know about that. That's, that's the ISD, but...
Because they concern about living space, but...
Yeah, well, and we'll have to deal with the building inspector because we can't decide that.
I mean, even if it was a porch, you'd still have to have come here because it intrudes within your side yard setback. So my motion is that it be removed completely.
Okay, because all the houses, they feel like that.
I know.
They, they all, like that, even the neighbor, they, even the owner.
You're done for today, though, okay? Sorry.
Calling 1 Regan Road, Ward 17, BOA number 363301. This is a request to demolish the garage and porch and to erect a rear addition and a garage. Violation is Article 65, Section 42, conformity with existing building alignment. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Steve Gorilla. My address is 1 Regan Road in Dorchester. I am the homeowner.
You know, your only issue is conformity with existing building alignment. Why can't you meet existing building alignment?
None of the, none of the homes on this street meet the alignment. None of them meet the setback requirement. And what I'm proposing is that I demolish the garage and the rear porch and replace it at the exact same setback that currently exists. All of the homes on the street, the garages are to the side of the house, and they all sit just in front of the house itself. So what I'm proposing to do is completely in tune with the rest of the neighborhood. And in fact, you probably won't even notice it's been done.
All right, very good. Any comments on the plans?
No, the drawings are adequate, shows clear intent.
Anything you'd like to be heard on, on Regan Road?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alec Benelli, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record of support with BRA Design Review. The applicant was very willing to meet with his neighbors and the Civic Association would give him support.
Anyone else on Regan Road? Motion for approval, BRA Design Review. Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, sir.
Thank you.
Calling 6 to 8 Farndale Street, Ward 17. This is BOA number 364082. This is a request to create off-street parking for nine vehicles. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. This is because of building of three apartments in a two-family zone. And Article 10, Section 1, limitation of parking areas. Your name and address for the record, please.
Nikisha Kriff, 12 Farndale Street, Apartment 3, Dorchester, Mass. 024.
Okay, the parking lot or the parking area you're creating, that's adjacent to your house?
Yes.
What kind of house? Do you have three family?
It's a three-family.
What I'm confused is this, is this parking going to be a 6 to 8 Farndale or a 10 to 12 Farndale?
Well, 10, it's, it's right next to 10-12 Farndale, but like, that, right next to it. I purchased it through a yard sale through the city.
Okay. Is it combined as one lot now or no?
Um, I would say this because I can't sell it unless I sell my home.
Okay, so, okay, so it's yard sale.
Okay, but aren't there restrictions on its use for the yard sale?
It's only for parking, and that's all I want to use it for, is parking.
Do you have any other parking on the lot?
Any other, for what?
Any other parking on the, on the, on the lot that you currently have?
No, for Farndale Street? I'm sorry, for 10-12 Farndale Street?
Yes.
No, it's the house is at 10-12, and then right next door, it's the lot.
It's the lot, and the parking will be for the residents of the house?
Yes, yes.
How many units are in the house?
Three units.
How many bedrooms?
Three bedrooms in each unit.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea to me.
Sounds like a lot of parking.
Sounds like, sounds ideal.
Yeah.
Nine bedrooms, nine spaces, and that, you can't use it for anything else. Unless those squirrels from West Roxbury would replace it.
No, I mean, the part also, the yard sale is that it can be, part of it can be screening or yard or something like that, you know, for the, for the betterment of the community.
Yeah, but you know, Farndale Street, it's pretty, pretty bad, it's pretty tight. All right, who wants to go on the record about the screen? Yes. Step on, step on the microphone.
Sorry, I'm about the chair, I mean, yes, I did spoke with Mrs. Nikisha. We requested to have a community meeting because TNT is one of the group was nearby. And Mrs. Nikisha already paved the lot before the community meeting. So what we asked her today is to present that in front of a community meeting without, if you guys, I don't know, all the option.
But we'll send her back to the neighborhood either way.
Yes.
Okay. Who else wants to be here on Farndale? One?
So is the whole lot now paved?
Yes.
Completely?
Yes. Well, there's grass and behind 10 Farndale Street, 10-12 Farndale.
Is there fencing?
Yes, around the whole property.
Do you have the lot as it exists, is there any screening, and when I say screening, planting or fencing or that kind of?
Yeah, there's fencing around 6-8 Farndale and 10-12 Farndale. So it's a privacy fence around the whole house and the lot.
Maybe since this is really going to be parking, maybe we can get BRA Design Review to soften it up. Get some proof, okay? That's if we get some proof. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with BRA Design Review.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And just for the BRA to know, it's for screening and buffering.
Right, right.
And lot radius.
Even if we pay, we want some planting first, softening up the edges or something, okay? But you're all, you got your nine spaces in there.
I agree.
All right, okay.
Calling 51 Vale Street, Ward 11. This is BOA number 380755. This is a request to extend living space into the attic, wreck dormers, and renovate. Violation to Article 50, Section 29, FAR excessive. This is for extension into the basement and attic. Article 50, Section 29, building height is excessive and insufficient side yard, right side yard. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moransky. I'm an attorney with the business address 416 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined with my client, property owner, Harryon Carbonara.
Mr. Chairman, I did make, present a submission to the board. I think the two pictures, the before and after picture speak for themselves the amount of work that my client has done to rehabilitate this property. There is no change in occupancy proposed here. It is a three-family, leave-in-three-family, it's to remain a three-family. There are three off-street parking spaces. The purpose of the application is to essentially replace three dilapidated dormers at the attic level with a shed dormer and to expand living space, additional living space into the attic area, approximately 860 square feet. Also, to extend living space into the basement, 694 square feet, which would enable this to become a building with a two-bedroom, first-floor basement unit, a two-bedroom, second-floor unit, and then a three-bedroom unit at the third and attic levels. The floor area ratio is already non-conforming. It would rise slightly to an FAR of 2.02. There's a height violation cited in the refusal letter, but the height of the building is actually not being changed. The violation owes to the fact that the shed dormer is being added to the right side of the roof. The right, the insufficient side yard violation also arises from the addition of the shed dormer. The building is fact, in fact, is not being expanded so as to increase the pre-existing right-side yard insufficiency. All right, I did submit to the board a letter from the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition in support of the application.
Okay, that's good. Is there a driveway?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
On the right side is a driveway, right?
There's a driveway on the left side, an existing common driveway leading to three parking spaces at the rear.
Who wants, Cara?
It's a narrow driveway, isn't it?
It's, let's see, pre-existing, Mr. Roach, it's nine feet, 10 feet is required by code, but it is in fact an existing shared driveway between that and the butting property to the left.
To the house to the left?
Uh, yes.
That's a driveway?
No, the, there's, the driveway is nine feet and with Mr. Fortune, four and a half feet.
To the right of the house if I'm looking at it straight ahead of me?
No, as you're looking at the house on the left, there's a driveway, there's a nine-foot driveway. Four and a half feet of that driveway is on the 51 Vale Street property. The other four and a half feet is on the property to the left. It is in fact a shared driveway.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Cara Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record of support. We had the community meeting. This was previously an eyesore in the community, and due to the changes that Harryon has made, everyone is on board.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Boston City Councilor, Tito Jackson. Like to echo Office of Neighborhood Services. I was in attendance at the Highland Park Coalition meeting, and they were in support, and I also was at the butters' meeting, so go on record of support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's have a motion. Motion for approval, BRA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Calling 492 Dudley Street, Ward 8, BOA number 364781. This is a request to change legal occupancy from offices to office and floral shop. Violation is Article 50, Section 37, Boulevard Planning Overlay District. Article 50, Section 28, the use is forbidden. And Article 50, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Darren Baird with Gulston and Stores. I am counsel to Dudley Neighbors Incorporated, the owner of the property. With me today is Eliza Perod from Dudley, Dudley Neighbors Incorporated, as well as Antoinette Barrows, who is the operator of the floral shop in question on the first floor.
Can I just ask, why is this? Because a floral shop is a retail use. I don't know why it's been pulled out as a forbidden use because it's a retail use.
It's, it's a retail use, but the property falls just outside of the Dudley Triangle 121A area and is in the 3F4,000 district. And as a result, local retail use is forbidden in that district. And so historically, you have a building that was a two-and-a-half-story residential building that up until 1986 was used as a two-family, and then in '86 was converted to general office use. Has had a number of office users, including the Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative and Dudley Neighbors Incorporated, who also have an office building adjacent to that at 504 Dudley Street, separated just by a parking lot. just by a parking lot from this building.
This is a separate group?
Yes.
DSNI?
Well, DSNI and DNI are, I guess they are, they are separate.
Just curious, just...
They're separate, but they're yet affiliated, so, um...
All right, that makes sense.
So, um, so what is, so it seems fairly simple.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's an office and a, it's generally a commercial zone, on the edge of the commercial zone.
Correct.
Um, so it sounds like the only issue is your parking requirement. Are you proposing any parking or is there shared parking?
So, there is on the site, um, the, the lot is sort of a, I guess, a double lot. Um, the house, the, the, the structure is located on the, um, northerly side of the lot and on the southerly side of the lot, there is room for a pretty wide area for at least tandem parking for at least two vehicles. And that's how historically that area of the site has been used. There is also on-street non-meded parking in front of the building. Um, you know, historically with the office use, it's required three spaces. It would, with this first floor thousand feet of retail use, it would ratchet up to four spaces. We think that, from the standpoint of impact, the majority of the business that happens here is delivery, um, so there are not a lot of people coming and going from the retail establishment, so we don't think it's going to create a burden to get a variance of one space from the code, you know, and sort of continue parking the way we've been doing it as a pre-existing non-conformity as far as parking is concerned. We don't see, think that there's going to be much of an impact.
This, this is a traditional two-story residential wood frame building.
Two and a half story, yep, residential wood frame.
Okay, so if, if the bottom floor is now going to be a, a, a retail space?
Yep.
Um, what, what's going to happen with signage and how's that going to change the character of the house?
Well, there is, um, so, you know, the, the history of this particular use is, it started about four years ago. Um, I think that everybody at DNI, when the use started, just assumed this was in the triangle and therefore commercial use was permitted. And so, there is some pretty low-profile signage that's already on the building, says Giselle's Floral Shop. If you are looking at it on Google Earth, you can see it, it's...
But this is a Boulevard Planning Overlay District, which regardless requires BRA Design Review per BPOD.
Cor... Yes.
No.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just the regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Cara?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Cara Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record of support. Uh, we have received a petition from all the local butters, um, near this flower shop and since it has been operating, existing as a flower shop, it has been a benefit to the community.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of District City Councilor Tito Jackson, like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Motion for approval with, uh, BRA Design Review, just for signage.
Second. Second. Any favor? All right. Any opposed?
And if, and if you would, uh, just another caveat, because the building sits back off the street, I'd be curious to know if you have plans to do to the sidewalk, do any design changes to the area that, of the setback? In, in other words, there's a front, a bit of a front yard.
There is, and I think presently the answer is, you know, there is some, um, modest landscaping there, um, and I don't think they have any immediate plans to do any renovations to the front of the building. Um, you know, obviously, we'll have to deal with the BRA on signage design review, but I don't think they plan on sort of materially changing the front yard.
No.
Or at least, it hasn't been mentioned to me that they are.
I just know, that's fine. He just wanted to know, that's all.
Who's next?
You're all set then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling thirty-seven Gates Street, Ward seven. This is BOA number thirty-six, forty-three, thirty-six. This is a request to extend living space into the basement, erect external stairs and a roof deck. Violation is Article fifteen, Section one, FAR is excessive. There is a building code violation on the same address. This is BOA number thirty-six, forty-three, thirty-seven. This is in reference to Section seven oh seven point three point nine, fire areas, there should be a two-hour fire-rated system. Chapter twelve, Section twelve oh eight point two, minimum ceiling height. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Doug Stefanov, ninety-three F Street, and with me is Dave Gambone, owner and developer of this, uh, project. Um, I come from...
What are we doing about building code, Mr. Stefanov?
Okay, sure. Uh, regarding the building code, if I could address the, um, mechanical room, we'll create a two-hour rated assembly for the, uh, common mechanical room in the basement.
Doug, I have a third-floor plan. Do you have a basement plan?
Do you have the old set? I can give you this.
This is what you're handling, uh, the changes. Okay, so the issue is in the basement, can you run it to what?
Um, there's a common mechanical room at the base of the stairs.
Right.
So, we'll encase that, create a two-hour rated assembly around the room. So, that's simple. And the second violation, I have a, a existing seven foot six condition unfinished. So, between slab and bottom of my, uh, floor rafters is, as this is, as a three-family, um, should be seven to six clear.
Right.
I'm asking for an inch and a half of relief to finish the basement.
Why, why not just drop the floor?
It's a decent slab. I mean, that would be a lot of work.
Yeah.
Cut the rafters. Well, I'll, I'll just say, um, I did recently go to the, um, Board of Building Regulation and Standards for another project I had up on Mission Hill, and, um, they did grant me an inch of relief. So, I'm, I thought, I don't, I will say else...
I trust to be consistent, okay?
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to deny the building code relief. Okay, so you still have open to you the option of going to the state, but I think it's important that this board remain consistent.
Second. All right, I appreciate you articulating that. I think I agree. So, just a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right. Um, what's left on this?
Can we, the FAR?
Yeah. Well...
So, the, um, owner would like to add square footage to the first-floor unit, um, by finishing the basement.
Is there living space in the basement?
What?
What living space will be in the basement?
It's a combination of bedrooms and bathroom, um, common, it's common space. The, the grade drops greatly, it's a walkout in the back, windows are ample on the sides, it has nice exposure.
And how many bedrooms will the first unit be?
It's a...
Two bedrooms.
It's a two-bedroom.
So, both bedrooms will be in the basement?
Yes, they will.
All right. Who's here on the Mayor's behalf? Eric?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our apprentice, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support. Thanks.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf, on behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty, like to go on record in support.
All right. I guess I'll ask if we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the zoning relief requested. With BRA Designer, any exterior...
There's a deck on the top.
BRA Designer.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Calling four sixty to four ninety-eight Tremont Street, Ward five. This is, um, BOA number thirty-six, thirty-two, oh-two. This is a request to change legal occupancy from one hundred and forty-four apartments, retail store, restaurant, daycare, fitness center, computer learning center, and services for residents to include thirty-six takeout use. Violation is Article sixty-four, Section eight, the use is conditional, the small takeout restaurant. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Dennis, good afternoon, Dennis Quilty, Attorney at McCarmer Quilty and Miller. With me is Rebecca Rock, who's a proposed operator of a bakery at this location, which would be the thirty-six eight takeout. She is the owner of the Gallows Restaurant in the South End, very well-known restaurateur. Uh, this concept is a, surprisingly, a one-of-a-kind, non-chain bakery. And, uh, she knows the designer-owned products and baker-owned products. The site is in the retail section of the Castle Square Housing on Tremont Street, so it's, it's across the street from, for example, the Ellis. Uh, although we did reach out to Ellis and they had no opposition, we do have letters from Castle Square tenants and the Castle Square Management Company, and we've, uh, conversed with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services about this.
So, it's a new bakery, it's not an existing restaurant that you're looking?
Correct. There's nothing, it was a glass store, right?
So, you understand about takeout rules and the rest, right?
Everything, yes.
Okay, Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jordan DC from the Mayor's Office, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. What's a pleasure to do. Motion to approve, removing for takeout, or?[1640.33]